Good evening, everyone. Welcome to another Volusia County School Board meeting. It's a pleasure to welcome you all here, and I'd like for you to please stand and join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and good evening once again. It's a pleasure to welcome you here and also to welcome those people listening through the Internet. In case you did not know that, we do stream this live, and so if you can't get here, listen to the meetings wherever you may be with your telephone. Speaking of phones, if you do us the honor of just turning your phone to silent, that would be great. And now I'd like to introduce the good people sitting around me, beginning with Ms. Linda Cuthbert, representing District 3. Next to Ms. Cuthbert, school board member Ruben Cologne, representing District 5. Our school board attorney is back, and a nice, nice tan going, Mr. Dorn. Okay. I won't ask where you've been, that's okay. Ted Dorn, our school board attorney, on the far right. Your far left, Ms. Connie Spire, our agency clerk. And next to Ms. Spire is our school board member from District 1, Ms. Jamie Haynes. Our vice chair of the school board is from District 2, Ms. Ida Wright. And next to Ms. Wright and between us here is our superintendent, Mr. James T. Russell. And my name is Carl Persis, and I'm the chair. So, once again, good evening, everyone. Items for approval on this agenda are items 1.03, 2.02, 4.01, 5... no, make that 6.02, 19.01, 19.02, 21.01 through 21.04, and 23.01. All right. Public participation times, there are numerous times for items on the consent agenda. If you'd like to comment on any of those before we vote, you're welcome to. Just fill out a card. And also for any board action item, you may speak to those as well. Just, again, fill out a card, and we'll take your comments. we'll take your comments before we vote. At 6:30 PM, we generally have a time there for the public to also participate, so that time will be 6:30, or let's say, it won't be before 6:30, but it'll be 6:30 or shortly thereafter. And then, if that's not enough public input for you, we have a little time at the end of the meeting. If you want to stick around, and you can share your thoughts with us at that time, too. Our district vision statement is that we are ensuring that our students will graduate with a superior 21st century education. And from time to time, the school board members, we get to go out and visit schools, or see some things that are happening in our district, and we like to share some of those things with you during this part of the meeting. So, if anyone wants to share a story, this is your time. Anyone want to go first? Ms. Haynes?
So, I had the privilege this past week to go to several of the high school honor award ceremonies for seniors, but I also went to River Springs Middle for the 8th grade awards. And they did a fabulous job. The students actually did the bulk of the awards and ran the ceremony, and they provided the music and everything. But towards the end, the assistant principal there got up to give out a special award to a young lady and a young gentleman, and they didn't know who they were going to be. And as he was telling the story very quickly of the young lady, he got to this part where he said, "And I enjoy our fishing stories." And about that time, he still had not named who it was, this young lady jumped up from the audience, and she goes running up to the stage with this huge smile on her face, and she epitomized exactly what he had described. And all I was thinking was, I really hope it's her.
Was it? Was it?
It was. It was her. And she just ran up there, took the award, turned back around, and headed back out. But her excitement and enthusiasm was exactly what he had described, and it was just a pleasure to see a student exhibiting that, and that she knew she was the one he was talking about. But I was also very pleased, both at University High and at Deland High, with the number of students that have chosen to enter our armed forces. And our armed forces were present there that evening to award them with the scholarships and signing bonuses and things like that. And it was just heartwarming to see those young men and young women that have already made that decision, along with all of them that are going to go on to college. But I summed the final piece up was, when the three of us were at Richard Milburn, and to watch those kids walk across that stage, and see the excitement and enthusiasm in that room, and knowing that those students faced so many obstacles to get to that point, and yet they made it.
They made it.
That was wonderful.
Amazing. Yeah. Thank you for being there. Great stories. Anyone else want to share a story?
I too-
Ms. Wright?
-had an opportunity. I had two activities on the same night. So, Atlantic was at 6, and Mayland was at 7. And I had to do another presentation in between the two, but I did make sure that I at least attended a little while, and then I had a presentation at Mayland for the Wilson Scholar. I had an opportunity to sneak into Campbell for a little bit, and I thanked Linda Cuthbert for actually stepping in for me, because I had another commitment that I just could not break. But I did sneak away for 45 minutes and had to go back to that meeting, but thank you for attending on my behalf. But our students did a fantastic job, and they're excited, and from the military to one student receiving about $60,000 in scholarship fund.
Whoa.
So, they have racked up monies for college, going into military. Some of them have some really good career choices, so I'm proud of our students.
Yeah, that's amazing. Thank you for sharing that. Ms. Cuthbert?
Part of 21st century education is to celebrate, and it's nice to have a variety of different celebrations. Went to the PTA banquet with you, Mr. Persis, to help celebrate all the hard work that parents do on a yearly basis, and it's always enjoyable. Can't believe how fast the year went. Also attended the retirement dinner for the district. Lots of teachers were thrilled. I mean, that's the one time everybody's very happy attending a retirement dinner. Also, to work with our union, the FEA, and I accompanied Ms. Thornton and Ms. Albert, Ms. Hazel, to the Bringing Your Voices Together Conference in Orlando two Saturdays ago. So, that's work yet to be done, that we can advocate for public education. Also, then, to celebrate students themselves. Spruce Creek Elementary is able to celebrate the Bobscars. They are the Bobcats, and they celebrate it with the Oscars, where these children are given the awards, the epitome. And everyone dresses in a dressing gown, like they're going to the prom. There's, you know, stuff hanging from the ceiling, and there are lights aglow, and talk about the excitement. I mean, to see kindergartners just bounce up and down continually. Man, I wish I could bottle it. And then toured with Mrs. Morrissey, and even the president of the construction company, Jay Hi. Did I say it right?
Rob.
Yes, thank you. Toured Chisholm to see how we were with the construction, and then met with the SAC committee afterwards to relay that information. It's going to be a gorgeous, gorgeous school when it's finished. And then last, I was able to attend the 8th grade celebration at Campbell Middle School. What Dr. Pickett has done with that school is just astounding. He, too, is like a little kindergarten, bouncing up and down, and his excitement radiates throughout the whole school, and I congratulate him for a very successful graduation, because from wall to wall, five rows of nothing but students dressed in white gowns, and it's just phenomenal. So, congratulations to our students who are winding up their school year.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. Thank you. Mr. Cologne, any news to share?
Oh, yeah. So, it has been very busy since our last meeting. I've had the pleasure of attending the chorus concert for Deltona Middle, which was a packed house, once again, as always. We had our 7th grade end-of-year awards, and that was at Deltona Middle. Also had the pleasure of going to the Richard Milburn graduation, as well as the graduation for legacy scholars. And if you could think of both of those populations, those are folks that have been through something, but they made it. There were five young ladies who graduated at legacy scholars, and, I mean, it doesn't get more rewarding than that, to see that despite all of the obstacles in their life, they were able to do that. And so, it's been really busy. One of the highlights of the last two weeks was I had the pledge, took advantage of the fact they were coming. I hadn't been there, and I think that, again, I'm extremely jealous of their wall-to-wall academies, and-
He's looking at you.
Cannot wait till we have those on the west side of town, because what they are doing is amazing. So, it has been really busy, and, again, we had all our awards banquets and all that good stuff, but lots going on.
Yes, indeed. Lot, lot going on. So, I appreciate you all sharing some of those things. I attended some of those same things with you, so I will not repeat what you just said. So, let's just move on with our agenda at this time, and that is item 1.03. Board members have received the minutes from the April 30, 2019 regular session, and the May 14, 2019 workshop and work session. Are there any changes, deletions to the minutes? Then we'll stand, those minutes will stand as presented. Next item is item 2.01. Agenda changes. Are there any agenda changes on the regular agenda? No agenda changes. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve?
Second.
Thank you. You've had a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, and the agenda has been approved. All right. It's recognition night here at the school board. Yay! Let's clap for that, because we got the whole place full outside, too, and a lot of students are here and their parents, and we want to get right to this. And for those of you who are going to be getting recognitions, normally what we do is, we do all the recognitions, and then we take the photos at the end of all the recognitions. But we have so many recognitions and so many people, rather than keep everybody here longer, we're going to take the photo right after we present yours. So, PTA with big smiling faces, I think you are number one here. So, item 3.01, and this will be Ms. Kelly Schultz is coming forward.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Chairman Persis, school board members, and Mr. Russell, I'm of the Volusia County Council PTA. Ms. Patty Edwards, chairman of the Volusia County Council PTA, to present the Florida PTA Reflections Art Winners.
Good afternoon, school board chairman, Mr. Persis. School board members, Mrs. Wright, Mr. Cologne, Ms. Cuthbert, Ms. Hayes, and superintendent, Mr. Russell.
And Barbara, if you could just pull that microphone closer to you. Yeah, there you go.
Usually, I'm loud enough. My name, and parents and guests, my name's Barbara Diaz, and I'm honored to be presenting. This is my last act as president. I'm also standing with Patty Edwards, our chairman of the arts, and our incoming president, Linda Withewachs. With me, thank you for giving us the opportunity today to recognize the 2018-19 Florida PTA Reflection winners. PTA believes that all children deserve a quality arts education, and encourages students to pursue artistic expression through participation in the annual Reflections program. Each year, the Reflections program offers schools and PTAs opportunities to showcase the work of our talented children. Students in preschool through grade 12 may submit entries in the categories of literature, visual arts, photography, music composition, dance choreography, and film video production, each reflecting on a specific theme, and also a special artist division option for students with disabilities to ensure that all students have the opportunity to participate. This year was the 50th anniversary of the Reflections program, and the theme was Heroes Around Me. The students we are recognizing today all placed in the top three in the categories for Volusia County, and were recognized by Volusia County Council PTA's reflection ceremony held at the Museum of Arts and Sciences in January. Their pieces were then submitted to the Florida PTA and competed against the entire state of Florida, where they placed as well. These reflection winners were then recognized at a celebration presented by Florida PTA on May 4 in Orlando. Their artwork will also be displayed at the Florida PTA Leadership Convention this July in Innisbrook. At this time, we'd like to recognize our five Award of Merit winners from Volusia, and our two Award of Excellence winners. For Awards of Merit, we have Adeline Bethia from Ormond Beach Middle School in the category of music.
Come on up. Come on up.
We have- Yeah, could they just stand for a minute?
Yes.
Get them all? Okay.
Yeah.
We have Olivia Whitney Chase from Tamoka Elementary in the category of music.
Is she here?
She might be outside.
Olivia Chase, she may not be.
Olivia Chase out here? Olivia Chase.
We have Luca Kaney Oliveri from Ormond Beach Middle in the category of photography. Addison Perdue from Ormond Beach Middle in the category of musical composition. And Alexander Sabkoyak from Freedom Elementary in the category of visual arts. These are our five Awards of Merit.
Okay, let's have a nice round of recognition for-
And we have two Awards of Excellence. Megan Beck from Ormond Beach Middle School in the category of literature. And Annabelle Kaney Oliveri, Ormond Beach Middle School in the category of photography. Congratulations to all of our winners, and thank you again for the opportunity to present to you today. We very much appreciate the dedication and support you've always shown PTA, the Reflections program, and all the arts program in Volusia County schools. We look forward to seeing you again next year.
Thank you. Thank you to our PTA. Kelly, we're going to do it inside. Students, if you can just come right to the front here, and we're going to get a quick photo. And if there are parents that want to take this photo- All right. Our next recognition is item 3.02, recognition of 2019 Crime Stopper Poster Contest winners. They're outside.
Can we get the Crime Stopper?
They're coming in. They're in the back.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you. Crime Stoppers, everybody?
Yeah.
All right. Chairman Persis, members of the board, superintendent Russell, I'm proud to be announcing our representatives from the State's Attorney's Office, Mr. Reed and Mr. Hathaway here. They will be presenting the Crime Stopper Award for 2018-19, for next year's posters. And I'm also proud to say that we kind of did really well this year. So, I'm going to van a whit this while they're doing that, so I'll let them go.
Okay, and just for the record, that was Bryce Hammond speaking.
I'm sorry.
Yes.
I'll be back later.
No worries. Yes, Mr. Hathaway?
Mr. Chairman, members of the school board, thank you all for letting us come and represent the State Attorney's Office and the Board of Directors of Crime Stoppers of Northeast Florida. It's our privilege to be here. Alongside me, John Reed, we are both managing attorneys in the State Attorney's Office, and we are both proud Volusia County School graduates.
Yeah.
So, we're proud to be here with you guys as well. So, it's our privilege to present on behalf of Crime Stoppers State Attorney's Office for the poster contest, which is a long-running contest that raises awareness in schools for safety, for anti-bullying campaigns, for making a difference in your school and your community. And this year, we've got a lot to be proud of. Volusia County Schools took two of the overall grand prize-winning vote tallies, and we'll get to what that means as we go through the total contest winners. But we're going to hand out some money tonight, which is a good thing, and hopefully that will encourage those that are present and those that are listening to participate in the future. We'd like to see every school get 100%. A lot of schools did get a higher participation rate this year, which is what we're gunning for, because they see those posters, and one student comes forward and says something that they see, or alerts a teacher or a staff member that they prevent any kind of violence or present any kind of bullying, then this process is totally worth it, and small investment that we make is 100% return is totally worth it. So, without further ado, we'll start with the elementary school winners. In third place, from Pathways Elementary in the 5th grade is Chloe Van Horn. Her teacher's Ms. Hendricks, and her principal's Mr. Schwartz.
If you are here, just come forward, and so, here she comes, and just take the money there.
And in second place, from Enterprise Elementary in the 5th grade, Ziza Lent. Mr. Nutz, her teacher, and Ms. McConnell's her principal. And in first place, from Horizon Elementary, Kaitlin Suku. Teacher, Ms. Ramsey. Principal, Mr. Harms. And Mr. Reed correctly pointed out that I probably should announce that third place won $25, second place won $50, and first place won $100.
Whoa!
It's not often that the State Attorney's Office is paying money out. And I should also say, State Attorney R.J. Larissa wanted to be here this evening. He had a family obligation he couldn't get out of, but he sent his regards to all the winners and to the distinct members and distinguished folks that are here tonight. All right, so the middle school, we've got a big winner in this one. The seven judicial circuit covers Volusia, Flagler, St. John's, and Putnam Counties. So, we had two winners tonight that not only won their county, but won overall, all four counties. So, Volusia has a lot to be proud of this evening. In third place, from Deltona Middle in the 8th grade, Stefano- In third place, from Deltona Middle in the eighth grade, Stefano Otisa Canales. Stefano's teacher is Ms. Holter and the principal is Dr. Eng. If I pronounce that, I'm so, Ms. Pronounced Eng, I'm very sorry in advance. Get up there?
Not here.
All right, that's all, sees get degrees, I think, right? Oh, that's a terrible thing, right? Middle school second place, in the seventh grade from Creekside Middle, Aleah Ulrich. Teacher, Mr. Nelson, Principal, Mr. Cash. And our middle school first place winner countywide and overall for the seven judicial circuit, from Creekside Middle, Teacher, Mr. Nelson, Principal, Mr. Cash, Zia Albright, who's gonna walk away with $400 tonight.
Whoa! Wanna see if she's outside? We're gonna check and see if they're outside.
All right, it's a pretty good check to be leaving on table.
No Zia?
Well, we'll make sure to see if she gets her money. They won't hold her, hold her against your shit show. Congratulations to the middle school folks and the elementary school folks. Moving on to the, the high school. In third place, from University High School, Teacher, Mr. Tomlinson, Principal, Dr. Jones is Meiling Rivera. And it, it wouldn't be Florida without there being a little bit of voting discrepancy, but the first place winner for Volusia County won for Volusia County, but the second place winner won circuit-wide. So there's a little bit of a hiccup there, but in first place, winning $100, from University High School, Teacher, Mr. Thomas and Principal, Dr. Jones is Erica Sophie. And our circuit-wide grand prize winner, but the Volusia County second place finisher, who's gonna walk away with $350 tonight, from Seabreeze High School in the ninth grade, Teacher, Ms. Botkin, Principal, Mr. Rawlings is Amelia Heck. On behalf of the State Attorney's Office, the Board of Directors of Crime Stoppers of Northeast Florida, thank you all very much for your participation. Good luck to you in your future endeavors. Thank you for keeping the interest in your school, in your school's safety and contributing to a better environment for education and for living in this community.
Thank you, Mr. Hathaway. And we wanna get a photo with all of you and all of the students as, as well. Feel free to come forward, I know you're very proud of your children as we...
Can we, can we get you guys looked this way first? Thank you, appreciate it.
Sure.
Thanks.
They have next shift?
Next shift, yes, next shift.
Shift for parents. You can come on up.
Come on up.
Anybody else? Come on up.
Come on up.
You got it?
Okay, we're gonna keep moving here. Our next recognition is item 3.03, recognition of all-state musicians. Hello, John. And... So you're gonna have Bryce here assist, is that it?
Bryce is going to assist, yes, sir.
Yes, I'm Visual Arts Specialist from Volusia County. Why isn't everyone's picture is that?
Okay, could you give me an idea how many students we're talking about, or is it...
So there's, there's 57 that were selected for all-state. However, not all of them are here today, probably just half of that.
Okay, and so the question from Ms. Wright was, are they org, can we, the question was, should you just have the one school board member with each group, with each...
So they're organized by district, by board member?
Okay, so that will work out then? So we'll do that, board members, is that good for you? Kelly, that good, all right?
Would you like me to stop after each board member to do pictures or wait till...
Yeah, so stop after each, each one will take the photo and then they don't have to wait around.
Very good.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Persis and board members and Mr. Russell. We are here today to give thanks to all of these students who auditioned for and were selected for one of the all-state ensembles. Many of these students had to audition against sometimes hundreds of other kids to make the all-state groups. It's a grueling process, they have to practice a lot and they have to be very, very good at their, at singing or at their instrument. And so what a great opportunity tonight to be able to recognize all of these kids. So we'll start with District One, Ms. Jamie Haynes. And these are all the students from District One who were selected. Not all of them could be here, however, I'm gonna read all their names for the record. So you have Aubrey Anucci from DeBery Elementary, Hayden Nichols, DeBery Elementary, Madeline Ray, DeBery Elementary, Emma Stanley, DeBery Elementary. From Deland High School, we have Dylan Adunizio and Joseph Becker. From Deland High School, we have Kaylee Croker, Jacob Gutierrez, Reese Winjack, Ken Browning, Mask Max Larson, Sidney Harp, Joshua Freeman. From Deland Middle School, we have Christian Mahler. From Taylor Middle High School, we have Jack Hoblick. And from University High School, we have Nate Peterson. Those are all the students from District One.
All right, let's hear it.
Right up here, he'll give you...
Parents, you're welcome to come on up, all of the students, parents who are in this group from District One. Very proud of your students, very proud of them.
Their teacher or administrator took their stuff. I got Deland Middle.
Yep, there's Delant Middle. And we still have several more over here trying to get through.
From District One.
All right, let's hear it for District One once again.
And they're having a little bit of trouble outside hearing, so I'll tell the schools first. The next set of schools is from Atlantic, Campbell and Silver Sands. So this is District Two, Ms. Ida Wright. And these are the students that were part of the all-state ensembles from District Two. Amanda Griffo, Atlantic High School, Nicholas Rossi, Atlantic High School, Joy Lewis, Campbell Middle School, Marley Watson, Silver Sands Middle School and Maya Watson, Silver Sands Middle School. Those are the students from District Two.
Come on up.
Good save.
Hey, everybody happy?
And the next set of students are from Creekside Middle, New Smyrna Middle and Spruce Creek High. This is District Three, Ms. Linda Cuthbert. Jenny Liu from Creekside Middle School, Emma Smith from Creekside Middle School, Hannah Pickens from Creekside Middle School, Siddharth Sukdeho from New Smyrna Beach Middle School, Madeline Schneider from New Smyrna Beach Middle School, Jordan Perkins from Spruce Creek High School, Ryan Seo from Spruce Creek High School, Crystal Fuller from Spruce Creek High School and finally Autumn Rundall from Spruce Creek High School. Those are all the students from District Three.
Yay!
Yes.
Our teachers, you know our teachers one up there? You got teacher and principals?
Okay. There we go. Take photos. You sure? All right, we're good, let's hear it.
The next set of students are from Hinson Middle School, Ormond Beach Middle, Seabreeze High and Tomoka Elementary. This is District Four, Mr. Carl Persis. Caleb Lanier, Hinson Middle School. Amelia Jones, Hinson Middle School. Samantha Cybert, Hinson Middle School. Sophia Schaefer, Hinson Middle School. Metali Gade, Hinson Middle School. Laura Pogdagnanon, Hinson Middle School. Anjali Pularetti, Hinson Middle School. Aiden Blackwood, Ormond Beach Middle School. Jillian Lautzenheiser, Ormond Beach Middle. Christina No, Ormond Beach Middle. Isabella Chase, Ormond Beach Middle. Maren Hauck, Ormond Beach Middle. Maya Palacios, Ormond Beach Middle. Anila Biename, Osceola Elementary. Brianna Holmes, Osceola Elementary. Ariana Ruiz, Osceola Elementary. Benjamin Kufteck, Seabreeze High School. Anya Atri, Tomoka Elementary School. Those are the students from District Four.
Any other students, before we take photos?
You want the teachers?
Teachers, yep, there's teachers, principals. I'd say others, but... Several parents. Guys, everybody in the back, anybody else need to take photos, come on up front. Come up front, you need to take a picture up front.
The next set of students are from Deltona High School and Osteen Elementary School. This is District Five, Mr. Ruben Cologne. Nahemi Casanova from Deltona High School. Jaclyn Lefice from Osteen Elementary School. And Catherine Lichtenwald from Osteen Elementary School. We have one more, so just one second, please.
Teachers, anybody else, principals?
And then representing charter schools are our last two students. We have Amy King from Burns Charter School and Noah Andreessen from Ivy-Hunt Charter School. This is a huge honor for these students. Can we all give a huge round of applause for them, please? Thank you, everybody.
Okay, you guys get to stay up here a while, right? So, okay, so we're gonna be moving on to item 3.04.
Hi, I'm back. Chairman Persis, members of the board, and Superintendent Russell, my name is Bryce Hammond for the record, the visual arts specialist for Volusia County Schools, and we are going to give out some awards today, and we're gonna keep it under five minutes. And I want to thank John Dupuy here for helping me with all this. We're a good team, and we got our DPs in today, so we feel good about that. All right, so we're gonna start out with the first award. These are all national and state awards that our artists, students have won. We actually are number three in the state overall for national and state awards, and per capita, we're number one in the state.
Yeah, well, let's give it up for that.
Okay, to start out, this is, we're gonna start out with Zoe Balcom. She is from Heritage Middle School, and she has won the 2019 Art in the Capitol Award, and her artwork was hanging in the Capitol in Tallahassee for the whole session. So that's for her. And the board member is Ruben Cologne. She may not be here. Okay, moving on. These are awards in excellence for Volusia County Schools visual art, and these are scholastics, DALL-E Awards, Florida Art Education Association Awards, and the Wyland Awards, national awards, like whatever you can imagine. So I'm just gonna read them off the medals and then hand them up to Mr. Dupuy to hand out. So, right now, we are, Ms. Jamie Hayes, and we are at Deland High School, and we have first the Award of Excellence with Distinction for the Florida Art Educators Association State Exhibition, and that's Damian Medina. Still at Deland High School, Sophie Morey, Scholastic Gold Key. Kaylee Stam, Scholastic Gold Key.
Bryce, Bryce, hang on a second. We're trying to get organized. They could not hear out there, so we just want to make sure everyone can hear their name when it's called, and we'll figure out the photo when we get to that point.
Yeah, I can, I can rock that out real quick. What do I have? I have the Art in the Capitol. Let me see, I have Sophie Morey, Scholastic Gold Key.
If you're here, if you would raise your hand so we know.
Kaylee Stam, Scholastic Gold Key. I have Damian Medina, Award of Excellence with Distinction, FAEA State Exhibition. And I have Zoe Balcom, the 2019 Art in the Capitol Award, which you can actually see back there on the...
If we call your name, just come on up.
And that's her artwork on the pedestal, on the easel back there, just so you know, you can see that today. Okay. Okay, so we're gonna go back to Deland High School here. We have Kaylee Comley. She has Scholastic Two Gold Keys State Awards. Okay, still from Deland High School, we have Christina Tosi, Scholastic Gold Key State Award. We have Steve Marquez, Scholastic Two Gold Keys State Awards. We have Olivia Begala, Scholastic Gold Key State Award. We have Casper Lachah, Scholastic Two Gold Key Awards. And then one more for Deland High School, Claire Begala, Scholastic Gold Key State Award.
Yeah, we're gonna do Deland High as a photo?
Yeah, we can, because I think that's everyone for the, for Ms. Hayes.
All right, let's do Deland. Anybody want to join the group from Deland High School, principals, assistant principal, teachers? Parents, if you want to get this photo, please come on down.
Everybody good?
All right, wonderful, Deland, great job. Next, we have Ms. Linda Cuthbert, her jurisdiction there, New Smyrna Beach High School. I want to tell you, Mrs. Cuthbert, that Deland got nine. They're catching up to you, just want you to know that, so a little friendly rivalry here. Anyway, we're gonna go ahead and do these awards. So for New Smyrna Beach High, do I need to wait? Are they in here? Are we here? Okay. Erin Daughtry, and that's Scholastic Gold Key State Award. We have Hunter Hill, who I know is here, Scholastic Gold Key State Award. Haley Blair, Scholastic Two Gold Keys State Awards and DALL-E Museum Exhibition Award winner. We have Tony Weiner, Scholastic Gold Key State Award, DALL-E Museum Exhibition Award winner. Kylie Wisnewski, Scholastic Gold Key State Award. We have Sam Libby, DALL-E Museum Exhibition Award. Haven Brockman, Scholastic Gold Key State Award. Devin Duke, Scholastic Portfolio Gold and Individual Gold Key State Awards, and that's one of her drawings right there. Jordan Lyman, Scholastic Gold Key State Award. Lenzi Roth, Scholastic Gold Key State Award. And Kaylee Warren, Scholastic Gold Key State Award.
That's New Smyrna? It's New Smyrna.
Okay, we're almost finished here. We're still with Mrs. Linda Cuthbert. We have two awards for Spruce Creek High School, and we have Merrill Lu with Scholastic Five Gold Keys State Awards and a National Silver Portfolio Award. And then we have Megan Diarcie with the Scholastic Portfolio Gold State Award, Individual Gold Key Award, and they also have their awards tonight, so she won't be here. So there you go there. Okay, Ms. Jamie Hayes, this is your University High School awards. We have a really important one coming up after these pictures. So I think I saw, I knew Ms. Langlis is here, and Mr. Gilmore is here, the two teachers. First of all, for University High School, Brooke Perry, and she has won a Gold Key and a National Gold Key Award, state and national. And then also from University High School, Cole Norris, and he won the U.S. Congressional Art Exhibit Award. His work will be in the Congress Building in New York for next session in the hallway.
I'd like to make sure that Brooke's mother comes up, because I'd like her in a picture with me if she does not mind. Thirty, thirty-two years ago, when I started my teaching career here in Volusia County, she was in my first class.
And thank you, teachers, for coming out. The emails are slowly dwindling down. Okay, here we go. Mr. Carl Persis, your turn. We have Seabreeze High School, two awards. We also have Ms. Botkin here, I know she's here, and we're gonna go ahead and announce those two. And I have these totally mixed up, but that's okay. So Hannah Rice, Scholastic State Gold Key and U.S. Congressional Art Exhibit also, and her work will be hanging in the congressman's office in the Capitol Building, too, in his office, so that's her. There is also, if, Mr. Persis, you have an image there by Hannah that won Volusia Select Exhibition, so if you want to hold that up, that's just a, that's a print of a giant piece of that. And then we have Christina Reyes, also from Seabreeze High School, and she has a Scholastic Gold Key State Award. And so you guys can do pictures there, and we have one last award, and then we're gonna finish this up. Thank you, Mr. Dupuy. You probably already be home. We'll get that photo. And Mrs. Ida Wright, this is your Mainland High School award, which is really exciting, because we've never won this award in the county, as far as I know. So, Mrs. Gardner is the teacher, and Jade Smith is the student's name, and she won the Wyland National Scholarship for Photography, which is huge, and I really, I don't think we've ever won that award, and that pushes us over the top to beat the state, so.
Wow.
Thank you. So that's it for visual art, and thank you so much, all of you, for supporting the arts. I hope you enjoy the images that we gave you to take home with you or hang in your office.
Great, and we gotta get the photo.
We're gonna get the photo with Mr. Cologne.
Yes. Okay, so Mr. Cologne? This young lady right here? Yep. All right, are we good out there? Yes, okay, good. Members of the audience, thank you for staying with us. We think it's really important to recognize all of those children. We have some amazing, talented students and their teachers, and, you know, everybody needs their time to get their recognition and get their pat on the back, and so we are happy to do that at school board meetings. Right now, it's about 6:30, and that is the time for public participation about any item that is not on the agenda, and we have three cards here, so let's get to them. The first one is Ms. Manning. The first one is Ms. Manning. And Ms. Manning, if you could just pick any chair there you would like and take that microphone and get it close.
My name is Commissioner Valoria Manning. I'm with the West Volusia Hospital Authority. I'm here because I worked with the Volusia County School Board for 15 years. And after working with the school board for 15 years, I was like either terminated or told that, well, you need to pass some tests. The test was passed. After passing the test, I came back and I showed them it was passed. And I still was not given opportunity to get a job. I've asked several times to go to the teachers' fair, that's the school board fair, and I have been denied. And I have applied for 85 positions and turned down by the Volusia County School Board. So what I'm here today to request for, my retirement monies. And also for my monies where I never took a day off in those 15 years. I was always there for the children. So I have personal and sick leave. I was told in Tallahassee, there is plenty of money that was left on the table in my name. So I'm requesting the commissioners, the school board members, to please look into this, Mr. Russell. I've tried many times to get in contact with Mr. Russell. I was denied access to him. So I'm just asking if you all would please let me have my money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Manning. Our next speaker is Mr. Cameron.
Thank you, Carl.
Good evening.
I'm Jim Campbell, Senior Vice President of Government Relations, Daytona Regional Chamber. And pretty, we're going back, making reference to the article that was in the paper Sunday, I believe it was, regarding district cost differential. And up there in Tallahassee, this last legislative session, our chamber, we followed that closely. And while the legislation didn't go anywhere, as I mentioned, I believe in a previous meeting, though, is that they are still going to do that study as it relates to DCD, but this time on a wage base level. And so I, like I said, notified that office that we're very much involved in. You know, we want to be involved here in Volusia County. I spoke with a, left a message today with the Department, the Office of Economic and Demographic Research. That's the lady up there. Name is Amy Baker. They're the economist team that does all the background financial research for the legislature. But there is a Pam Shanker. She's the one, we understand, that I was told that's going to be doing the study per se. And we said, you know, I mean, just that we want to be involved every step of the way. So if y'all have anything, you know, I mean, just that we could work with you guys on, though, we'd be glad to team up with you. I've been in touch, like I said, with Amy Hall and with Deb Mueller on this as well. So be glad to work with you.
Thank you, thank, we appreciate the support from our chamber. Our next speaker is Teresa Brazi. Good evening.
Hello.
Hello.
My name's Teresa Brazi. I'm a teacher at Pine Ridge High School.
And just pull the mic a little closer, Teresa.
Pull the mic a little closer, need a little bit better so y'all can hear. Is that better now?
Yeah, thank you.
Okay, thank you. My name's Teresa Brazi. I'm a resident of Deltona. My kids graduated from Pine Ridge High School. I'm a teacher at Pine Ridge High School still. Mr. Russell was the principal while I was there, and then he became our superintendent. He is a man of honor, integrity, faith, and character. I do not like what is being said about him. Do I know the whole story about everything? Absolutely not. But the motto of the school and the district's always been build relationships, have trust, and have communication. I hope you give him a chance. I hope he gets to stay. If he leaves, it will be, I believe, harder for our district, our kids, our schools, our teachers, because most of the people I know are very happy with your performance. We appreciate all you've done for us, sir, and I certainly hope you stay. And if not, it's a loss for all of us. So thank you, sir.
Thank you. Well, actually, that was something that is on the, on the agenda, but it wasn't identified like that on the card. But since it is the next item on, on the agenda, we're going to segue right into that and go into any public comment about item 4.01. So this is public comment only on 4.01. I have two cards. And I believe the first one is from Andrew Dickens. Andrew Dickens, please come forward. Good evening, Mr. Dickens.
Good evening, thank you. My name is Andrew Dickens. I'm a graduate of all three levels of Volusia County Public Schools. And I'm now a parent and a volunteer. I've been a DAC member, entering my 10th year for school year 19 and 20. I've been a SAC member for the same period of time, and a multi-SAC member for the last three years and anticipate for the next three at least again. I have some observations I feel compelled to share in my time and capacity as a graduate parent and advocate of Volusia County. In fact, I've got six pages worth of thoughts, but I've got three minutes. Fortunately, I don't talk very fast, so I'm just going to get to the highlights of what I think is the most important thing. You know, I only came to know Mr. Russell after his ascension to superintendent. I found him to be passionate and dedicated to the district and its well-being. I don't know if everybody knows this, but he took over during a time when per student funding was abysmally low. The Center on Budget and Policy Priorities, 2016 data shows that Florida was dead last in the nation for inflation-adjusted per student funding levels from pre-2008 levels. Yet somehow, he still managed to make lemonade elements, especially when it came to distribution of resources, negotiating teacher salaries, improving school security, and still managing to raise the district grade from a C to a B. Not meaning to be critical of his predecessor, but I found him to be much more approachable. I felt like he made it obvious that he's actively listening to the concerns of the parents and the DAC members. And he made clear from the start, one of his biggest priorities was to improve student graduation rates. And according to the most recent data I've seen, Volusia County graduation rates are at record highs. So I don't think anybody could argue that he hasn't been wildly successful at one of his core objectives. I understand this is a different situation from Dr. Smith's resignation, but I feel like it feels the same. And I feel that, you know, instead of effecting a smooth transition with a potential candidate from outside the district, I fear that the actions by the board will only serve to unnecessarily complicate the search for candidates and obfuscate the merits of the superintendent position in this county for anyone who expects to exit on their negotiated terms with their dignity and reputation untarnished. And lastly, I'd like to echo the comments of a previous member. I think the most important thing that we could be looking at and doing right now is educating the community and the business and leadership of the county of the effects of the district cost differential, because that's where a lot of our money is going. And the more we do to educate our community and get them involved, because I understand the powers that be aren't going to listen to you, they're going to listen to us. And the more we can educate and spend time doing that, I think it would be better off for it. But the long and the short of it is, I want you to know that you had, in general, you have my support. You know, we all want success for our district and our students. But to reiterate, I think that the board's move to accelerate the terms of Mr. Russell's departure are likely premature, probably unnecessary. And I don't think they serve the interests of finding a suitable replacement.
Thank you, Mr. Dickens. We gotta stop there.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Our next speaker is Vicky Presley.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening, I'm Vicky Presley, former area superintendent for Volusia County Schools, Chairman Persis, school board members, and Mr. Russell. As I listened to the school board meeting on May 14th, I was shocked by the motion to terminate Mr. Russell's contract. I thought, this can't be happening. They just extended his contract for another year. As the discussion continued, I realized that it was indeed happening, but it was surreal. Mr. Russell agreed to serve as interim superintendent when the district needed an immediate leader. No, he's not Dr. Russell, but he is a man of integrity who has served effectively in various capacities in this district over the years and has given his all to this district. He has worked tirelessly helping to move the district from a C to a B. Also, under his leadership, our attendance rate has increased. Our graduation rate has certainly improved. And the new Pearson Elementary has opened as a result of the half-cent sales tax program. All of this and more has been accomplished with Mr. Russell at the helm of the district. It would be detrimental to the students, families, and employees of this district to remove Mr. Russell at this critical time. As the district transitions from one school year to another, there are so many decisions that have to be made related to staffing and budgeting and the overall operation of the district. And Mr. Russell is that knowledge base who is familiar with what needs to be done and what has to happen now. What is on the horizon for the district, new school start time, a transition to new math and language arts textbooks at elementary level, a new computer system, agreement between bargaining teams, as well as, we know, a DOJ investigation. As Union President Elizabeth Albert was quoted in the News Journal, intimating that this is not the time for us to be distracted by something like this, and I concur. There are so many reasons why Mr. Russell, if he is willing, should be allowed to remain in his position until the board has had an opportunity to begin and complete the process of selecting another superintendent or until his present contract ends in 2020. Any adverse decision that is made about the superintendent directly impacts our students, our most valuable prize. Please remember the old adage, haste makes waste. Don't allow that to happen to this district, to the employees, and most importantly, to our children and their families. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cameron, you wanted to speak on this issue as well, is that correct? No, I understand. Green card, yellow card, screen card time. Yes, you can, yes, you can, you can.
Thank you again, Carl.
Again, yes.
I'm still Jim Cameron.
You're still Jim Cameron.
But, no, I wanted to stress, I mean, yeah, previously, I was speaking on behalf of Chamber. I'm speaking as an individual now, though. And I say that, I mean, because I've been coming over here to y'all's school board meetings. I mean, just back when Jim Surratt was superintendent and also Joan Cole, Bill Hall, Peg Smith. But I also wanted to say, I've really enjoyed working with Tom here. I mean, he's always been amiable and good to work with and all. And so he's been a good partner with us and Chamber, business community. I also wanted to stress, though, at the same time, the staff here that you have, though. And I want to mention a couple of people in particular, though. I mean, Deb Mueller, who I give a lot of credit to, I mean, as far as working on the financial issues, especially the budget, though, I mean, especially when the legislature deals, let's say, a rough hand, you know, I mean, as far as allocations, though, goes to Volusia County. But at the same time, legislature, Amy Hall, work with her, she's on our Chamber's Legislative Committee, very good to work with. But any type personnel matters, Dana Page Pender, always, like I say, calls back. But then others like Sarah Lee and Kelly Joyce and Greg Akins. I mean, I wanted to commend them as well, so you've got a good team here, though. But that's me as an individual.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Cameron. Very nice. And that concludes the public participation on item 4.01. So now it's, it's the board's time to take action on this item. And as we all remember, Mr. Doran was not here at our May 14th meeting. And, but he is back, and he just wanted to clarify, I guess would be the best way to say it, what is in front of us tonight. So if it's okay with the board, I'll let Mr. Doran explain. Go ahead.
Okay. All right, so I listened to the tape of the last meeting where I was unable to attend. And what I took from that tape and what everybody, I think, ultimately agreed was correct, was that the board essentially passed a motion to place this item on an agenda for discussion tonight. There were a number of board members who expressed, you know, some concerns or positions at the last meeting, but that would not be relevant, except to the extent that if they still feel that way, it would be relevant tonight. What we're doing is we're reviewing this issue from its inception tonight, we're beginning. The superintendent has a contract that runs through August 31st, 2020. It is the board's prerogative to end that contract earlier than that date. But there are, of course, ramifications to making that decision. Not the least of which is the contract provides for severance if there is an early termination, which is the payment of his salary for 20 weeks. That would roughly constitute about $85,000.
How much? I didn't hear.
He said $85,000.
$85,000 in round numbers. There would be some additional severance benefits and a few other things that would add to that in terms of cost. Now, it is absolutely the board's right to do this if they choose to or not do it or whatever. So the question, as I understand it, that was put on this agenda is, does the board want to do an early termination of the contract? And the key question, if that moves forward, is upon what date would that be effective? And so that's where we are.
Okay, yeah. Anybody have a question for Mr. Doran before, okay. Seeing no questions, then let me ask you a question. Would it be in order for someone to make a motion and include the exiting date, if you will, for lack of a better term, all in the same motion?
All motions are available. That certainly would be in order. A motion to just continue would be in order.
Okay, so everything is in order.
It's up to the board.
All right, so you've heard the explanation for Mr. Doran. Would anyone like to make a motion? Start there.
I will make the motion that we terminate Mr. Superintendent Russell's contract effective June 30th exit date.
June 30th of 2000.
2018, 19.
2019.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, there's been a motion by Mr. Cologne to terminate the superintendent's contract early with that effective exit date then of June 30th, 2019. Do I have a second to the motion? I don't have a second to that particular motion. So the floor is open for another motion. Ms. Haynes, were you gonna say something or you? I thought you were. If you were not ready, that's fine. I feel like I should be playing the Jeopardy music here, but I don't have that tune downloaded.
I guess I have a question.
Question.
So are we just going to sit here tonight and make a motion and either second it and vote on it? Or is there going to be any discussion?
Yeah.
I guess I'm kind of.
Okay, well, let me, that's fair, that's a fair question. I generally don't like to dis- I generally don't like to discuss unless there's a motion on the floor with a second, and then we can discuss pros and cons of the motion. That's the correct way to do it, otherwise...
Then I will second Mr. Cologne's motion.
All right. So the motion is, and you correct me if I'm wrong, the motion is to terminate early the superintendent's contract with the effective date being June 30th, 2019. That's the motion that you're seconding. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. So now we have a motion and a second. The floor is open for discussion. Did you want to ask your question now, Ms. Haynes, or you did not want to ask it?
My question was kind of like to understand the order.
Okay. All right. So that was your question. Discussion, yes?
So I just want to say that my position has not changed from the last meeting, and anything I had to add or say was said in that meeting. There's nothing else for me to add.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Any other board members want to comment?
I have a question.
Yes, Ms. Wright, question.
This is directed to our school board attorney. So last meeting, my question was, could we not actually have a motion to not to renew his contract at the end of next year, and if we wanted to begin the process of looking for a new superintendent now, couldn't we do that?
Yes. But now, let's make sure everyone's clear on this point. The contract was set to end August 31st, 2019, and it was extended to August 31st, 2020. So if we're... If the... If the... The way you phrased it, you were saying to not renew, there would not be a renewal until August 31st, 2020.
Okay.
So... But you can pick any date, you know, and put the superintendent on notice, and if it's any date prior to August 31st, 2020, then it would be an early termination. You could then, if you pick an earlier date, you could then, that date I just said, you would then start the process of locating someone, you know, to serve as the permanent superintendent going forward. If you pick a date that, for instance, in the motion, it's June 30th, 2019, there's... It's not going to be possible to go through a process and select a new superintendent by that date, so then you would have to consider an interim superintendent if that's the date that you fix for his last date. There would have to be... We have to have a superintendent. We cannot have not have a superintendent, so it's either going to be him, it's going to be an interim, and it's going to be anytime between now and August 31st, 2020.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Doran. Thank you for the question, Ms. Wright. Ms. Cuthbert, did you have a question or comment?
No, I have a comment. My feelings also have not changed. At our last school board meeting on May 14th, this board voted four to one to place on our agenda tonight a board action item to begin negotiations for early termination of our superintendent's contract, which is to expire August 31st, 2020. As a result, confusion and instability throughout our district was created. Financial, capital, academic, human resources, purchasing, transportation, and scheduling planning had either been delayed or completely halted in its tracks. To restore our community's faith and our ability to effectively lead, I'm in favor of allowing him to work until the end of his contract agreement. Sorry, my voice is hoarse. Any Florida school board must adhere to certain standards as suggested by the Florida School Board Association, and I'm mentioning seven. Number one, bring about desired changes through legal and ethical procedure, upholding and enforcing all laws, state boards of election rules, and court orders pertaining to schools. Two, recognize that decisions must be made by the board as a whole, and that when made, these decisions must be supported by the entire board. Support school person... Number three, support school personnel in the proper performance of their duties. Four, work with the superintendent, neither undermining nor intruding into areas legally assigned to the school administration. Five, make policy decisions only after full discussion, public board meetings, and render these decisions based on available facts, refusing to surrender that judgment to individuals or special groups. Six, sorry, I corrected, six. Listen responsibly to community and to make decisions based on the best interests of the system as a whole. In many cases, these six standards were not followed. Number one, ethical procedures are based on factual, informed knowledge, and not upon personal interpretation or social media perceptions. Number two, an email sent to the superintendent demanding his resignation by a board member unbeknownst to other board members less than 48 hours before this May 14th board meeting is unethical. Three, all school personnel should be supported in a non-confrontational manner, including the superintendent and his administrative staff who come to our dais to present information to us during meetings and/or workshops. Number four, board members' duties include the creation and implementation of policy and procedure. Their number one responsibility is to maintain a financially secure and academic-stable school district. Number five, policy decisions are made after full meeting discussions. Some board members' opinions are not taken into full consideration or totally ignored. Number six, it is incumbent upon each board member to educate him or herself of current educational issues, local, state, and federal. It is physically impossible for any district administrator to constantly inform each board member of every issue or to concern or concern of this district on a daily basis. Number seven, decisions should be based on what's best for our school district's process. Decisions should not be based upon personal agendas. We have five school board members, and we are the custodians of our school district. It is up to make sure of its success. A superintendent is hired by us to run the district for us. A Volusia County school superintendent has many responsibilities. He has to look after 7,521 employees, 4,529 teachers, 2,680 support staff, 195 school administrators, 70 district administrators, 269 bus operators, 301 buses with 290 routes, and 2,200 bus stops transporting 28,000 students, along with 235 maintenance employees located at five maintenance hubs and five transportation hubs. There are 572 schoolway employees serving 44,000 meals daily during the school year, and now will serve meals at over 55 schools this summer. Volusia County Schools is the largest restaurateur in the county. Volusia County Schools has 85 schools, 45 of which are elementary, 12 middle, nine high schools, nine alternative special centers, one district virtual instructional program, and two combinational schools, one K through eight and one six through 12. According to the FISH report, 767 instructional buildings must be maintained, including 576 portables or relocatable units, which include restrooms and concession stands, plus 145 other buildings. Oversight of the building of new schools like Pearson and Chisholm is a result of his oversight of the half-cent sales tax and dealing with significantly higher labor shortages and material cost escalations. He oversees 63,264 students, seven charter schools. He also must oversee the 2019-20 general fund of $524.5 million, an increase of $19.3 million from last year. Also, the 2019-20 total budget of $868.5 million, a $25.8 million increase from last year. He must oversee our debt service, our hiring and firing raises. He must be always accountable to the readjusting of the school revenue sources, making it very difficult decisions based upon the shortfalls created by the DCD, the lack of sufficient student allocation funding from the state legislature. Forty elementary schools are served by EDEP, which is the Extended Day Enrichment Program. 3,800 students are enrolled, and presently, the district is organizing a way to serve the public by initiating a before-school program for middle schoolers. This is out the superintendent's discretion. Volusia County School receives no PICO money, that's Public Education Capital Outlay Money. 158 million of all of it goes to charter schools. Therefore, the superintendent must pay particular attention to capital outlay budgets. He's responsible for all academic pre-K through 12 success, graduation rates, FSA, SAT scores, ACT, IB, AP, Cambridge, Career Academies, industry certification, school and district grades, safe and secure schools with an ongoing plan to support our Guardian Program, student and employee mental health, implementation of state and... Pardon me, federal mandates. I got dry, sorry.
Take your time.
Thank you. Raises for employees, implementation of the school calendar, community involvement with businesses, chambers, associations, clubs, PTA, SAT committees, rotaries, as well as our unions. He has to have accurate and effective communication with all stakeholders, weather damages like hurricanes and sinkholes. I know I certainly wouldn't want to deal with FEMA. Implement board-directed policies as well as their procedures. I know I've left just a few out, but I wanted to briefly reacquaint the audience with what some of what he does. The motion brought forth and passed last meeting did not consider the demands of the school calendar. May and June are extremely busy, appointing new districts and school administrators, interpreting, readjusting state legislator laws, in which many cases to be implemented by the DOE, which takes time to accomplish. Reorganizing district department priorities, reassessing or redistributing the general fund categories in order to end a balanced fiscal year by June 30th. Increase, curb, or eliminate capital projects, programs, curricula, bus routes, staffing due to a lack of interest or funding, determine the final assigned and unassigned fund balances. That doesn't include attending banquets and award ceremonies, organizational staff and school board meetings. The superintendent is responsible for the school district to conclude one year while simultaneously beginning anew. This was all tumultuously tossed to the wind two weeks ago. Severance pay has been determined to be about $85,000. With an approximate $10 million debt to begin our 1920 school year, this is an irresponsible and unnecessary use of public dollars. $85,000 could pay for a little over two teachers, two new teachers, a little more than one high school administrator, maybe two TOAs, a large percentage of desperately needed instruments for the New Smyrna Beach High School band. And I'm also quite sure other high school band directors would make similar comments. Would also help the before-care program for middle schoolers, or even pay for some school campus printers. In summary, this money is better spent to support our students and their classrooms. If one looks closely at student academic progress from one year to next, it slows, it accelerates, it slips, it dips, it rises, mostly to circumstances the district cannot control, personal tragedies and joys, hurricanes and Chamber of Commerce weather... Oh, Mr. Cameron. Economic depressions and booms, increase and decrease of poverty, decrease and increase of student population, decrease or increase of student funding, and possibly changes in school staffing. So far, third grade FSA reading scores have returned with very positive results. What else lies in store for our students? Last year, our graduation increased again to 78.7%. If one only counts our traditional, 10 traditional high school rate, it's closer to 80%. What success will Volusia County School have this graduation year? We're only five points away from becoming an aid district up from a C four years ago. Who knows what other accomplishments our students will have? It will probably take a minimum of six months to search for a new superintendent. I can't even begin to imagine what salary and contract requests he or she will demand when knowing that twice in the last four and a half years, a Volusia County school board member has publicly ridiculed, embarrassed, and surprisingly demanded the firing of So I plead with my colleagues to reconsider your motion tonight. In the long run, this will cost our beleaguered district much more than money. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. Okay. Is there any other comments from anyone at this time? No. All right. I will weigh in on here just a little bit. As Mr. Russell knows, I like him. I like him. I always have liked him. I've known him perhaps as long, if not longer, than most people here. And however, I am in favor of the motion. I was not on the board when the board appointed Mr. Russell as the interim. I was not on the board when the board appointed him as the full-time superintendent. And I think what you have to understand now, and I respect you, Ms. Cuthbert, and you know I... You're a friend, and I respect Ms. Wright and all of you here. But what happens in government bodies is when the elected body changes, and they don't have the confidence, and whether it be the city manager or the county manager, to move forward from where we are now. And I'm not saying Mr. Russell hasn't moved us forward. He has in some areas and he hasn't in others. But I say, from where I sit, it is time for a new superintendent. It's time for us to take that next step, to take where we are now with the people I have full faith and confidence in at senior level staff and all the teachers out there. I know what they're going to do. They're all going to step up, and they're going to keep this district going. And as I think Mr. Russell will be the first one to agree that Volusia County School District is bigger than one person, always has been, always will be. It's collectively, that's what makes us great. And collectively, we have to now support each other as we move forward. The board needs your help out there. Help us pick the successor. I think what I would like to see, and I'm not going to talk about where we go from here at this point, Mr. Doran, but at the end of the night, I think it would be good for us just to look at our calendars and just see if we have some time where the five of us could get together at a workshop setting and just discuss process. You know, where do we want to go from here? How do you want to go about hiring an interim? How do you want to go about hiring a full-time superintendent? And have that meeting facilitated by Florida School Board Association folks, just to give us some guidance and present some options. Not going to do that tonight, but just I'm saying, just to look at calendars, because I would like to do that as soon as we can. We have to advertise it. It takes seven days, right, to advertise a workshop, so kind of keep that in mind. I strongly support, and I'm so happy you said June 30th and not any date sooner than that. Mr. Russell has a lot of things going on, our whole school district does. It's the end of the fiscal year. It's the end of the fiscal year. There's just, just a lot of checks need to be signed. There's a lot of things to finish out this fiscal year. We have, we have a workshop planned on June the sixth, I believe it is, with a lot of important issues here. We need Mr. Russell here to see all those things that, that has been started. He needs to see those through. I think it would be good if we could get our interim to spend a few days with Mr. Russell, too. I would love to see two days a minimum. If we could get three or four, even better, but whatever that, however that works out, so that that transition can be as smooth as possible, so that when July first comes, July first signals the start of a, of a new fiscal year, it's the start of a new school year, and that we have somebody ready to go, ready to hit the ground running, not to miss a, miss a step, and get the opening of school ready to go. We are fortunate that, in fact, it is this time of year. We do not have to worry about operation. We do not have students in school in June. We don't have teachers in the schools with students in, in June. It's a, it's a, it's a good time. In fact, it's probably a perfect time for a, a, a new person to come in, spend time with Mr. Russell, learn about where we are, why we are, and keep it going with the senior staff that Mr. Russell has. I have full confidence in that, that this district will be fine, and that we will be ready to go in, in August. I also am very confident, again, because of the timing on this, and because of the way news travels fast with the conventions and conferences coming up in June, the superintendent's conference, the Florida School Board Association Conference, the F A S A Conferences, all those conferences take place second week of June. The, the word about this vacancy will definitely be out there, and those folks who think they may be good enough to be the superintendent here, I'm sure they'll start dusting off their, their resumes and start, start letting us know. So I believe without question that we can hire and have onboard a new superintendent by January of two thousand twenty. And I think if, if, if the board is willing to, perhaps we'll have to make some sacrifices in terms of our calendars to meet certain people at certain times, but if we're all committed to that, I think that we could easily make that date work for, for, for all of Again, I want to, not that you're walking out the door, so don't, don't walk out the door, because we need you here. And so, but I do want to thank you, and I do want to tell you that sincerely, and I, I think you know that. We have a motion on the floor. We have a second, and we have any further discussion, Ms. Wright?
I do, and I want to chime in, because I heard Linda, we were here when Dr. Smith was, the relationship went sour. And the reason for me making the motion, when I did, so we didn't have to walk this road again in this manner. And we know things that are intimate, that just maybe board members know, that everybody don't. But I, I will agree with Linda, it is all about how the public will perceive, and we say we would get good superintendents or good people to apply. Time to tail, but that makes me very uncomfortable, because it appears that we are dysfunctional at times, and that we need to. And I honestly believe he's a man of integrity, and he deserved to be, this should happen a little differently, and that's why I encouraged us last meeting. The reason I voted for it to be put on the agenda, so we could have this discussion.
Fair enough.
Not putting it on the agenda, what going to resolve the issue, was not going to make him feel any better, because it was, the cat was out the bag. But we have guys, it was tough the first time. It will be tough this time, but.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. We have a motion. We have a second. I think you all know what the motion says. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
So the motion carries three to two. Mr. Russell?
Let me just get my notes here. I respect your decision, but a lot was said about me at the last meeting, and I just want to go over the last four and a half years, what stood out to me. And I think it speaks to my beliefs. I came on board as superintendent in the midst of contentious negotiations. So contrary to popular beliefs, contentious negotiations did not begin with me. We settled that, we settled on a one-year deal. But what was pressing us in February, March, and April were our schools were absolutely filthy. We were failing health department inspections, and I had to replace that company, which was no small, no small action. It took a lot of time. But I also realized our district was hurting, and I built relationships. I went to schools, met with staffs, I began weekly visits that I continued up to last week. I also met with students. I tried to be sensitive and not always photographed myself in those meetings, because I wanted them to share their thoughts. The following year, my focus was on graduation and acceleration. We set up e-learning labs in every high school. I was going after those students that needed one or two credits that had dropped out, those students that were fifth-year seniors. I flexed their schedules. My deal was, you meet the graduation requirements, you can leave, you can work, and you can come back for graduation. That worked. We put Abbott, Advancement Via Individual Determination, in every single high school, because I believe children from poverty should be able to go to college. And I wanted the first child from these homes to go to college. We began our blitz on dual enrollment. We pushed D S C, Bethune-Cookman. We even brought Bethune-Cookman to offer courses to our high school students in the Deltona area. We also worked with Embry-Riddle, the Tessa Academy at Atlantic High School. That academy just built an airplane. We had a contentious round of negotiations that year. We ultimately settled on a two-year agreement. What was addressed was the reeling in of our healthcare costs. We had five separate plans that were literally, literally decimating the financial well-being of this district. We fixed our healthcare costs because we capped our healthcare cost. And I know people, some people still resent that, and I understand it. But we offered our employees a free plan, and that free plan still exists. We corrected our healthcare expenses, and it paid for the raises. And still, those savings from healthcare, that three-year deal that we just agreed to in October, is paying a good portion of this newest raise. That's financial responsibility. That's financial leadership. But not only that, hourly employees, with that two-year deal, what they received was not only a raise, we raised their base salary. These are the people in the kitchens. These are the clerks. These are the paraprofessionals. These are the bus drivers. In two thousand sixteen-seventeen, we began our chronic absenteeism push. Seventeen point four percent of our kids were chronically absent, missing twenty percent of the school year or more. That's eighteen or more days. Last Friday, we looked at the number, and we're down to fourteen point five this year. That's fifteen hundred students. That's taking Deltona, let's say, Deltona High School, every single student was chronically absent, no more. That's what we've done with that work. We accelerated programs, the Cambridge program, in Pine Ridge, Deltona, Seabreeze. Dual enrollment numbers went up for our African-American, our Hispanic, and all students. You know, we always, we always say during my evaluations, don't look at the equity report by the state, that's a snapshot one day. We continue to blow our numbers away with dual enrollment. Industry certification again, exams are a focus, academies are growing. C T E programs were introduced, manufacturing. Next year, we're starting cybersecurity. There are going to be thirteen thousand jobs in Florida in cybersecurity. And you know what? It doesn't make a difference if you're male or female. And we're going to prepare our students to take those jobs. I believe in that. Middle school scores were stagnant. Their, our reading scores were going down. But we were one of the only county districts in the state of Florida having reading set aside as a course in our middle schools. So what I did that year is I sent our middle school principals across the state to highly effective middle schools and what, and to find out exactly what they were doing. The next year, which was last year, we implemented the middle school restructuring. Now, instead of reading class, what you see is STEM classes. You see media and technology. What you saw at River Springs, that's a media and technology program, that is an academy at the school. That replaced a reading class. Those students are totally engaged. It was just amazing what's going on there. You have science Olympiads and courses. You have critical thinking. We added an additional teacher on assignment at every middle school. You know why? Because I wanted the administrators with the House Leaders House, you have a sixth, seventh, and eighth grade administrator. I wanted them to spend more time with teachers in the P L Cs, and those TOAs could, could cycle through. We have, that last year was a year where we had STEM and tech classes introduced in elementary schools, and that's exploding now. More and more elementary schools now have STEM programs. We have a world-class, world-class partnership with Advent Health. It is a national model, valued over two million dollars, focused on three things, chronic absenteeism. They just put e-care, it was on Channel thirteen news a few weeks ago, e-care in thirty-five of our schools with the highest chronic absentee rate. We always heard about athletics, and what that, what this partnership focused on was athletic trainers. They need support, they need help. Concussions, concussion protocols. We put all of that in place. And also physicals, just last week, you saw at the racetrack with, with Florida, not Florida Healthcare, sorry, Mr. Cologne, Advent Health, we saw the numbers had showed up there. It was free for our athletes. Also, more importantly, I think, was the healthcare academies and our healthcare programs. There's internships, speakers, visits to the hospital. And that money, none of that money stayed in the district. That money from, from Advent Health went right back into those academies and those programs. The level of support that we began last year for our at-risk schools unprecedented. We've had additional administrators, we gave them additional hours. Why did I give them additional hours for their administrators? It's because their administrators were eleven months, and those schools needed people there to help with hiring. So I allowed an eleven-month assistant principal to work throughout the summer to help the principal hire. Again, here's that word again, we had contentious negotiations, but in the fall, we settled with a three-year deal. We had an elementary day that will increase by thirty minutes next year. But you want to know the real work? The work my staff did last summer, putting guardians in every single school. They are highly trained, they are vetted, and we have an armed guardian or sheriff or police officer at every school, and some schools more. Some of our high schools, we have a deputy, and we have a guardian there as well. This Herculean task was done in a professional manner with no shortcuts. Our mental health expansion in this first year is off. I challenge each and every one of you, when you are at the Florida School Board Association, you ask about guardians, and you ask about healthcare, and then you compare what they tell you, what's happening in their districts, because I've heard their superintendents, and then you compare what we did here. It's phenomenal work. Our single point of entry were practically done, except for some problematic schools, such as Silver Sands, because of the way it's laid out. We put an S E L coach at every single middle school. And they were split, we had, we had fourteen, and we had seven, and they, they split between two. What did that do? That helped us with bullying. It helped us with, with relationships and working together, and lessened the load of the guidance counselors so they could focus on other, on other areas. I know last board meeting, our contract was brought up, but we have M O U's now with performance pay and teacher transfers. That all came from the contract. We're in preparation with the E R P insists. During the spring, you all have seen, we worked on start times before the bell, which we're going to talk about in a few minutes, and we also knew elementary curriculum. We did a heck of a lot. And then finally, we did the Twerk Tugas partnership. It was said last meeting, I was an ineffective leader. This is what I've done. Thank you.
All right, we're going to take a ten-minute break. I don't know whether you heard me, I said we'll take a ten-minute break.
I just didn't want to run into you.
All right, we'll see you later.
I'll do my best.
My computer shut down. I don't know why.
Right down here.
Okay.
Okay, we are back and we are on item five point zero one. There were no cards filled out for participation on the consent agenda items. Mr. Superintendent, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, there is. Item nine point zero three is being pulled for further study and review.
Thank you. So do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item nine point zero three?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne, do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, we have approved the consent agenda. Are there any comments board members want to make about any consent agenda item?
May I ask why that was pulled?
Mr., she's asking why it was pulled.
We have to get some appropriate signatures and then also do a review of the document.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right, we are now on item fifty, have I passed it already? We have to, we haven't, we haven't approved the consent agenda. Yep. We approved the, the agenda, and now I need, I want to make sure that I'm clear, that we have approved the items on the consent agenda. We have approved the consent agenda, but now we need to approve the items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Wright made the motion, second by Mr. Cologne. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and the motion carries. Now fifteen point zero one.
Yes, thank you. Graduations, we'll be seeing a lot of each other from here on out. So Deland High will be Wednesday, May 29th at 7:00 PM at the Ocean Center. Taylor High School will be Thursday, May 30th at 7:00 PM at Stetson, at the Edmund Center. The following will all be held at the, will be held at the Ocean Center. Seabreeze High School, Friday, May 31st at 4:00. Mainland High, Friday, May 31st at 7:30. University High, Saturday morning, June 1st at 8:30. Pine Ridge High, Saturday, June 1st at 12:30. New Smyrna Beach High, Saturday, June 1st at 4:00 PM. Deltona High, Saturday, June 1st at 7:30 PM. Atlantic High, Sunday, June 2nd, 2019, at noon. Spruce Creek, Sunday, June 2nd, 2019, at 3:30 PM at the Ocean Center. Our last day of schools for students will be this Friday, March 31st, 2019.
May, may.
Did I, what did I say?
March.
March.
Please tell me it's May.
Yeah. Last day of school for teachers will be Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. School Board Workshop, Thursday, June 6th, 9:00 AM in this boardroom. School Board Workshop on Tuesday, June 11th at 10:00 AM at the boardroom here at DAC, and then followed by a school board meeting, Tuesday, June 11th at 3:30 PM in this boardroom. That concludes.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. Just staying on the graduations just for a second.
Sure.
Would we be picking up our gowns?
Yeah, they'll have it ready for us tomorrow night.
Oh, okay, thank you, thank you so much, okay.
All right, that is announcements. Now, Mr. Superintendent, presentations, district update?
Yes, we're going to do a presentation on our Before the Bell program.
Alrighty.
That's creating a safe zone for middle school students starting next year in the morning.
I like the title.
Mr. Persis, board members, Mr. Russell, thank you for this opportunity. We, as the board knows, we approved a new bell schedule. My name is Greg Aiken, I'm the chief operating officer for Los Angeles Schools. With me today is Ms. Fisher and Ms. Teresa Hauser, and so we're going to, Terry Hauser, excuse me, boy, there you go. So we're going to go over Before the Bell. Now, we established a committee, kind of looked at lots of things, and these ladies are going to go over that today for us, and then if you have any questions, we'll answer those at the end.
Thank you. Proceed.
We did a needs assessment with our families and, as suspected, we had a number of families that indicated that they would need and be in agreement to participate in a morning program at our middle schools. So I'm going to turn it over to Terry to kind of give you some details and walk through it with you, and then we'll take your questions if you have any.
What we did is we sat and talked a little bit about some of the things that would be included in a morning program. The programs will be from 6:30 to 9:00 for the, for twelve of the middle schools, and it will be for, they will have some, you know, supervision before school, they will have STEAM activities, they're going to have time to work on homework and some of their studies, there will be some games and sports, and we will also take some of the student suggestions into consideration and plan accordingly. Like the after-school programs at the elementary schools, they will vary a little bit because of the staff that's there and their talents and interests and the interests of the students. The registration fees are included, you can see that on the slide, they're $25 per student if they're on full lunch, and $10 per student if they're on free or reduced lunch. We will have registration times, the June 10th, 11th, 12th, and then the 18th, 19th, and 20th at the different middle schools. These are the participating middle schools. The only ones that are not there are Taylor Middle High, because it's Middle High, and Holly Hill, because it's the K8. So all of the other middle schools will be participating in this. The staffing will consist of what we call a site lead, who will basically run the programs, be in charge of the accounts and things like that, and scheduling of whatever activities are scheduled. The, it will be, Before the Bell assistants will be there to assist them and help, and they will be based on the ratio of one to 21 to 25. And depending on the size of the site, most of the sites will have at least one teacher present to, who are familiar with working with that age group of students, and to work with them on some of the more academic things and focus that way. So this is the flyer that we will put out to parents. The only thing different at this point in time is this flyer was made before we had the dates for registration, so we now have the dates on the registration, for registration with the, for the flyer. We will be contacting the middle school principals to have it distributed to their sixth and seventh grade students, and the elementary principals to have it distributed to their fifth grade students, and to put it on their social media websites, and there will be a connect ed call out, a message out to all parents of those students in those grades, so that they are aware of the registrations.
And just so you know, Ms. Shepherd and her crew are ready, they're just waiting for a button push to give them the go-ahead and that those will be printed and ready to deliver to the schools.
Just, just to be clear, the registration fee, that's a one-time?
It is, yeah, once a year, yes.
Once a year?
Yes.
Once a year, okay, thank you. Questions from board, yes, Ms. Haynes?
So I see that you have a reduced fee for the second child if they're paying the full amount for the regular lunch, and if they're an employee's child, but is there a reduced fee if they're on a reduced or free lunch for the second child?
There isn't, we, the rate was already reduced because they're on the reduced lunch for the fee, so that hasn't been, you know, it hasn't been past practice, so when we came up with the rates and the calculations, we did not figure that into this one either.
Okay, thank you. Further questions, Ms. Haynes, or? No? Mr. Cologne?
And I asked this in our previous meeting, will the principal have the ability, say we have a student who flat out cannot afford this, is there an opportunity for a principal to tap into other funds in order to accommodate a family rather than having their child sitting outside for an hour and a half in the winter because they have not paid the fee? So how would that work? Because one of the things I asked is that-
Okay, we are back and we are on item 5.01. There were no cards filled out for participation on the consent agenda items. Mr. Superintendent, are there any items to remove from the consent agenda?
Yes, sir, there is. Item 9.03 is being pulled for further study and review.
Thank you. So, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda minus item 9.03?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Alright, we have approved the consent agenda. Are there any comments board members want to make about any consent agenda item?
May I ask why that was pulled?
Mr., she's asking why it was pulled.
We have to get some appropriate signatures and then also do a review of the document.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. Alright, we are now on item 5... Have I passed it already? We have to... We haven't approved the consent agenda.
Yes.
Yep. We approved the agenda. And now I need... I want to make sure that I'm clear, that we have approved the items on the consent agenda. We have approved the consent agenda, but now we need to approve the items on the consent agenda. Do I have a motion for that?
Motion to approve.
Ms. Wright made the motion, second by Mr. Cologne. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and the motion carries. Now, 15.01.
Yes, thank you. Graduations, we'll be seeing a lot of each other from here on out. So, Deland High will be Wednesday, May 29th at 7:00 PM at the Ocean Center. Taylor High School will be Thursday, May 30th at 7:00 PM at Stetson at the Edmund Center. The following will all be held at the Ocean Center. Sebries High School Friday, May 31st at 4:00. Mainland High Friday, May 31st at 7:30. University High Saturday morning, June 1st at 8:30. Pine Ridge High Saturday, June 1st at 12:30. New Smyrna Beach High Saturday, June 1st at 4:00 PM. Deltona High Saturday, June 1st at 7:30 PM. Atlantic High Sunday, June 2nd, 2019 at noon. Spruce Creek Sunday, June 2nd, 2019 at 3:30 PM at the Ocean Center. Our last day of Schools for Students will be this Friday, March 31st, 2019.
May, may.
Did I... What did I say?
March.
March.
Please tell me it's May.
Yeah. Last day of School for Teachers will be Tuesday, June 4th, 2019. School Board Workshop Thursday, June 6th, 9:00 AM in this boardroom. School Board Workshop on Tuesday, June 11th at 10:00 AM at the boardroom here at DAC, and then followed by a school board meeting Tuesday, June 11th at 3:30 PM in this boardroom. That concludes.
Thank you, Ms. Superintendent. Just staying on the graduations just for a second. Would we be picking up our gowns?
Yeah, they'll have it ready for us tomorrow night.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thank you so much, okay. Alright, that is announcements. Now, Mr. Superintendent, Presentations District update?
Yes, we're going to do a presentation on our Before the Bell program. That's creating a safe zone for middle school students starting next year in the morning.
I like the title.
Mr. Persis, board members, Mr. Russell, thank you for this opportunity. We, as the board knows, we approved a new bell schedule. My name is Greg Aiken, I'm the Chief Operating Officer for Los Angeles Schools. With me today is Ms. Fisher and Ms. Teresa Hauser. And so, we're gonna... Terry Hauser, excuse me. Boy, there you go. So, we're gonna go over Before the Bell. Now, we established a committee, kinda looked at lots of things, and these ladies are gonna go over that today for us. And then, if you have any questions, we'll answer those at the end.
Thank you. Proceed.
We did a needs assessment with our families, and as suspected, we had a number of families that indicated that they would need and be in agreement to participate in a morning program at our middle schools. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Terry to kinda give you some details and walk through it with you, and then we'll take your questions if you have any.
What we did is, we sat and talked a little bit about some of the things that would be included in a morning program. The programs will be from 6:30 to 9:00 for 12 of the middle schools. And it will be for... They will have some, you know, supervision before school. They will have STEAM activities. They're going to have time to work on homework and some of their studies. There will be some games and sports, and we will also take some of the student suggestions into consideration and plan accordingly. Like the after-school programs at the elementary schools, they will vary a little bit because of the staff that's there and their talents and interests and the interests of the students. The registration fees are included. You can see that on the slide. They're $25 per student if they're on full lunch, and $10 per student if they're on free or reduced lunch. We will have registration times, the June 10th, 11th, 12th, and then the 18th, 19th, and 20th at the different middle schools. These are the participating middle schools. The only ones that are not there are Taylor Middle High, because it's Middle High, and Holly Hill, because it's the K-8. So, all of the other middle schools will be participating in this. The staffing will consist of what we call a site lead, who will basically run the programs, be in charge of the accounts and things like that, and scheduling of whatever activities are scheduled. The... It will be... Before the Bell assistants will be there to assist them and help, and they will be based on the ratio of 1 to 21, 1 to 25. And depending on the size of the site, most of the sites will have at least one teacher present to... Who are familiar with working with that age group of students, and to work with them on some of the more academic things and focus that way. So, this is the flyer that we will put out to parents. The only thing different at this point in time is, this flyer was made before we had the dates for registration, so we now have the dates for registration for the flyer. We will be contacting the middle school principals to have it distributed to their 6th and 7th grade students, and the elementary principals to have it distributed to their 5th grade students, and to put it on their social media websites. And there will be a connect ed call out, a message out to all parents of those students in those grades, so that they are aware of the registrations.
And just so you know, Ms. Shepherd and her crew are ready. They're just waiting for a button push to give them the go-ahead, and that those will be printed and ready to deliver to the schools.
Just to be clear, the registration fee, that's a one-time?
It is. Yep, once a year, yes.
Once a year?
Yes.
Once a year, okay. Thank you. Questions from board members? Yes, Ms. Haynes.
So, I see that you have a reduced fee for the second child if they're paying the full amount for the regular lunch, and if they're an employee's child. But is there a reduced fee if they're on a reduced or free lunch for the second child?
There isn't. We... The rate was already reduced because they're on the reduced lunch for the fee, so that hasn't been... You know, it hasn't been past practice, so when we came up with the rates and the calculations, we did not figure that into this one either.
Okay. Thank you. Further questions, Ms. Haynes? No? Mr. Cologne?
And I asked this in our previous meeting. Will the principal have the ability, say we have a student who flat-out cannot afford this, is there an opportunity for a principal to tap into other funds in order to accommodate a family rather than having their child sitting outside for an hour and a half in the winter because they have not paid the fee? So, how would that work? Because one of the things I asked is that there be a no-cost option. And I understand why we've added a cost to this. However, I'd like to know that a family can come to a principal and say, "I simply cannot afford it." And I would hate to think that we'd have supervision for a child, you know, because the kids are gonna get dropped off no matter what. And so, I'd hate to think that here's a child who's allowed in the cafeteria, but another one who's not because he hasn't, you know, gotten his stamp on his hand to come in.
I would think that is up to the principal to find the money in order to do that. That would be up to that principal's discretion. The truth of the matter is, we have to staff the program. And so, you know, we have to pay the personnel that's there, that are there at 6:30. And if... This isn't in my script, but I'll give you my candid opinion, and that is, I suspect we'll probably be operating in a loss the first year, until we see how this all pans out. So, if you're asking if the... This district office has the funds, no, they don't. But if a principal has some contingency funds, whether it's PTA or, you know, whatever, then that would be up to the discretion of that principal.
Yeah, including Angel Fund, you know, currently right now, we have an Angel Fund for Schoolway Cafe. I could see this as one of those options as well, that we could actually put out there if need be.
Mr. Superintendent?
Principals will find a way, they always do. The students... You have families that come to you when you're a principal and tell you their needs, and you work your way through it. Remember, a portion of this money, yes, it pays employees. Also, it helps... We have to buy the computers and the startup items and all that. But the schools will be getting a portion of the funding as well, you know, just like the elementary schools, you know? So, you know, there's... You know, in time, that pot will grow. But they'll work... They'll find a way to work with parents. Mr. Cologne, we run into that, for instance, with field trips, things like that. You find a way.
As long as we're committed to do that, I think that...
Thank you. Mr. Cologne, other questions? Board members?
May I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Cuthbert.
I know someone might ask me, so I would like to know what answer I can give to a parent who wants to know why you charge a registration fee.
That goes to offset the cost of the insurance that was... That we need to have for each of the children. We have a special... A different insurance coverage in the afternoon, and so it goes to offset that cost.
Oh, I'm so glad I asked. I never thought of that. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other questions for our committee? Ms. Haynes?
I'd just like to say thank you, because for years, I've watched students being dropped off at as early as 7:00 in the morning at our current middle schools, when they're not starting till 8:45, and they've been unsupervised during that time. So, I appreciate the fact that you extended it to starting at 6:30 AM, giving parents an opportunity to get to work on time without leaving their child just dropped off somewhere. Because I've even seen kids dropped off, you know, two blocks from school, thinking that that way, you know, while I've dropped them off, nobody realizes I dropped them off, and they're on campuses alone, and that's when issues can occur, and I want to make sure our kids are safe. So, I appreciate the time and effort you went into this to put something together, and I like the large span of hours. I mean, that's something we've never done, so I appreciate that.
Thank you. Any other comments? Alright, thank you all for presenting. It looks like excellent program, Before the Bell.
So, we're gonna push it forward.
So, we're going forward. Going forward.
Yeah, we got thumbs up, right?
Thank you. And you're up again? Is there another... Is there another presentation?
Ah, no, sir.
No, oh, okay. I'm sorry. Okay. So, we are now going to go to item 18.01. Ms. Dana Page Pender, our Chief Human Resources Officer. Good evening.
Good evening, Chairman Persis, board members, Superintendent Russell. I just have a brief update for this evening, actually just finalized today. We have two job fairs for our support staff. Our focus primarily has been on instructional staff, but we're focusing on our support staff. Bus operators and attendants, Schoolway Cafe, extended day, the trades, construction trades, as well as paraprofessionals, on June 13th from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Mainland High School. And then, on the west side, on June 20th, from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM at Deltona High School. We will get the word out, again, we just finalized it today, so you will see a media blitz for these job fairs for the support staff.
Right. Is it like all during the day? Is it...
It's from 8:00 AM to 12:00 PM.
Oh, 8 to 12, okay. Can you comment on the how we do in hiring? How's it going with teachers?
As of about lunchtime today, we had 225 positions advertised. 119 have cleared through the process, and we have about 80 in the process. So, we're chugging along.
80 in the process of being hired?
Right.
Yeah, good. Questions for Ms. Dana Page Pender? Yes, Mr. Cologne?
Can you repeat that again? So, we have 200 and...
We have 225 advertised, 119 cleared through the process, and 80 in the process.
Okay.
That's good. Any other questions for... Nope, I guess not. Thank you for that.
I have a question for the superintendent regarding HR. Have we made any decisions on our Chief Curriculum Officer yet? With Ms. Rachel Hazel being the interim, I mean, were we gonna bring a recommendation to make her the official?
No, we were going to keep that position as interim until the interim superintendent or new superintendent's on board to make those decisions.
So, I do have some thoughts on that. You know, obviously, there's a lot of instability right now, and I think that Ms. Rachel Hazel is our stability, especially with all the parts that we have moving on her side. And I don't know if it would be out of place.
Well, yeah, I think what you're delving into now is personnel, and we really...
So, I mean, I'm asking if that would be his recommendation. I know he's been held back because of this going on, but I kinda like to see that solidified as we move forward.
I'll give you my...
Please?
I can say it now.
You've always said it. You've always said it.
Look at the scope of her work the last... From a year ago to this point, she was involved heavily in negotiations. And I mean, it is a grueling process. She has... She's been there throughout the changing the bell schedule, the work there. She's been... Played a pivotal role in that. The curriculum, the two pieces that we're buying, we're changing the entire elementary curriculum next year. And she was the force behind that. I just see her as exceptionally talented, exceptionally, you know, professional, and an exceptional candidate in this position. Look, she spoke at an international conference in spring at a John Hattie Conference, okay? In the world of education, John Hattie is like the Rolling Stones, okay? And she was the opening act in Scotland. She can go anywhere.
No, I agree.
Her talents are that deep, you know? And so, I believe as a district, it would not hurt you in any way. I have the utmost respect for her. When I have certain questions, you know, I call my cabinet members, and she always has an answer. I mean, I like it, but she always has an answer, and she's straightforward. And so, I have a great deal of respect. I hope that answered your question.
So, is that a recommendation?
So... Mr. Cologne, you're out of order with this, okay? And I appreciate that you like her, and I think we all do, but that's up to him to make that recommendation at a future board meeting, and then we will proceed from there. And just want you to know that, okay? Alright, we are moving on to item 19.01, Student Discipline regarding...
I just want to note that I am actually not out of order.
Well, I rule that you are out of order, so because you're talking about personnel, and we're not gonna get into discussing personnel appointments as a board. That comes from the superintendent. Alright, it's item 19.01, Student Discipline Regarding Attendance. Ms. Fisher?
Good evening, Mr. Persis and School Board Members, and Superintendent Russell. I have two requests this evening concerning student discipline. For the first request, a recommendation is made that the superintendent request the board extend the suspension on students' Alpha ID, 1RZQF, 1RPWG, 1RDEE, 1SXSS, 1RBGN, 1RBMR, 1QGAJ, 1XVEQ, 1RQGW, 1PTOX, 1TABV, 1TATR, 1TPNQ, 1TWYG, and 1SVBC from school attendance through May 31st, 2019, for the purpose of further study and evaluation.
Mr. Russell?
The superintendent recommends the board extend the suspension of the aforementioned students from school attendance through May 31st, 2019, for the purpose of further study and evaluation.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation from the superintendent. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. A second. Ms. Haynes, thank you. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. The motion carries. Ms. Fisher?
For the second request, a recommendation is made that the superintendent request the board extend the suspension on students' Alpha ID, 1PMRX, 1VZYH, 1TVVN, and 1PHIG from school-sponsored transportation through May 31st, 2019, for the purpose of further study and evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Russell.
The superintendent recommends the board extend the suspension of the aforementioned students from school-sponsored transportation through May 31st, 2019, for the purpose of further study and evaluation.
Thank you, Mr. Russell. You've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Wright. A second. Thank you, Ms. Cuthbert. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and opposed. And the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Fisher. Our next item is 20.01, the presentation about the district website.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have been working, as you know, over the last year redesigning our webpage. Again, we were looking at webpages of other school districts across the state, and they've done some phenomenal work, and we're about to roll it out.
Ooh, alright.
So, they're here to talk about it.
Alright, who's gonna lead this discussion here? Alright.
Mr. Persis, Superintendent Russell, members of the school board, thank you for your time tonight. Up at the dais with me, I have Joe Sudda, Supervisor of Web Services. We have Ms. Kelly Schultz, Director for Community Information Services, and myself and Mike Chiketti, Director for Technology Services and Innovation. What we're going to see today is a brief overview of some of the points that we wanted to address with this website relaunch. I think what you're going to see when we get to the demo is this... These slideshows in action, okay? So, we have definitely a question slide at the end, but we want you to be able to see the work that was done. And so, we're over two years of work from start to finish really realizing what we needed. And then, we'll go into a brief demo, and then Ms. Schultz will close us out with the perks of having a modern website with functions and features that we've been looking for. So, for now, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Sudda. He's gonna be guiding us through the PowerPoint, and then right into the demo.
Mr. Sudda, hello?
Hello, sir. Alright, so, our development principles through the design process for this website have been to focus on modern design. The current website launched in the 2012 to 2013 timeframe, and the web has changed a lot since then. It's one of the advantages of it being a young technology, is it changes rapidly. So, in terms of design, it used to be that you wanted to minimize scrolling. Now, scrolling's not too bad, because everybody is used to using mobile devices. Same thing goes for use of white space. It used to be you wanted to minimize that, and now you want to let the content breathe. Devices, you used to be able to predict a mobile user's screen size, because they only came in certain sizes. Now, there's so much variation that it's easier to just plan for every screen size. So, the new design places greater emphasis on multimedia through photos, social media integration, and bringing content to the surface. So, you're not gonna be clicking through as many layers as in the current website. Works across all device types and screen sizes. This is because about 53% of our users use a phone or a tablet to access the website, so the design adjusts automatically based on the user's screen size and device type. It's more user-friendly. We've simplified the navigation and based it on who the user is. It complies with relevant accessibility guidelines. We believe that by designing with accessibility in mind, we'll make the web more inclusive for everyone everywhere, no matter who they are or what they can do. And we'll work proactively after we launch the website to ensure that we stay compliant with the relevant accessibility guidelines, as well as adding training materials to educate the people that create our content and creating accessible content, particularly with regard to documents like PDFs. And the content and structure are going to be built for the public. The current website is structured using the internal departmental structure of the district, which is not necessarily obvious to people outside the district who don't work for the district and aren't steeped in it. The new website keeps relevant information together with relevant information by limiting duplication across departmental websites to create a more cohesive feel for the content. We've designed the new website with our stakeholders directly. We and Community Information solicited feedback through surveys and in-person meetings. We added a survey on the front page of the website that was accessible by the public so that we could collect feedback from anyone who wanted to give it. We met with stakeholders, including advisory councils, students, parents, district staff, teachers, and administrators. And we met multiple times throughout the design process with the superintendent's cabinet to go through the design, get their approval to keep going, solicit their feedback, explain our decisions, and get further direction. The new website is more robust and secure than the current platform. It's completely cloud-based. The communication will... Sorry, remain steady even through severe weather and hurricane closures. So, with the website distributed amongst multiple data centers instead of one data center, there's no single point of failure. So, if one data center goes down, the website remains up. It's also more secure and built on a more extensible platform. In terms of content reduction, we made the decision very early on that the public website is for the public. It's to inform them about our district. The current website is largely geared towards staff. It's just evolved that way over the last seven years. In many ways, it's become a collection of bookmarks used by our internal staff. So, we're refocusing the content and the structure of the website on information for the public. We are rearranging content to use our existing resources, so we're taking that information that was on the public website and moving it to existing internal resources where our staff can make use of it, such as our Intranet, as well as our Office 365 and group and team sites. What that's resulted in is a nearly 60% reduction of content across the entire public website. So, just think about that. We started with over 1,300 pages and over, well over, 10,000 documents on the website, and we've reduced that number by about 60%. We've done that not just by eliminating old content, but by merging like content, eliminating duplicates, and making sure that what's there is focused. What that's gonna result in mostly is more accurate and relevant search results. That was another big priority. If you've ever used the search on our website, you know that you've... It's cluttered. You've likely had to dig through information that was either irrelevant to you, outdated, or geared to an internal audience. So, by eliminating the old content, merging similar content, and working with our community to ensure that their content is current, we're delivering, or we will be delivering measurably more accurate and relevant search results.
So, next steps in where we're headed, where we are. Currently, as Mr. Sudda explained, we were involved in the overhaul of this website, which is no small task, as those of us that have been in the district quite a long time have known several website iterations to be. That's phase one. And phase one is what we're going to be looking at today with your oversight, as well as direction as to implementing Go Live to assist our public with what work has been done and transpired so far. Phase two is where we're going to be moving into our school sites. And so, our website is multi-layered. It's not a one website and you're done. We have multiple tiers that we're working through. So, our next phase will be working in much... In a similar fashion as we've done with our district website, collecting stakeholder feedback, much of survey results in formal and informal meetings, and getting the sense of what it is necessary for our schools that need that communication outlet for the public. Because again, this is... Because again, this is driven by our public for our public. So those phases are where you see here. And the reason for the order that you see, middle schools, elementary schools, high schools, primarily has to do with the number of sites. Middle schools has a smaller number of site. At the same time, they have not ventured too far away of our current platform of our website when you visit them now. Elementary schools, much the same. Obviously, the largest sites in the collection of schools, but they also have not ventured too far away from the current platform, so it makes migration and such a little more easier and able to maintain. And then high schools, because many of them have ventured into uncharted territory of utilizing modern websites, right? For the look, for the feel, for the appeal for the public. And so that's going to be a very, very driven project, that phase three, because we know that those schools have taken it upon themselves to really get a sense of what makes their school their school, while also making sure it maintains its district presence involved with Volusia County Schools. And that's going to, again, take the design and features to be determined with input, not just overarching Mr. Sutter making the call, but he will be helping quarterback this election, as well as his teammate, Tom Melton, on the Web Services team. And this is also going to assist in the branding efforts, and that's much of what Ms. Schultz will talk about once we're done showing you the demo, because it's all great and good seeing this on the slide, but I know you want to get your eyes and ears on it. So from this point, I'm going to have Joe kind of drive. Mr. Sutter's going to drive a little bit. I'm going to switch screens real quick, and I'm going to go to our current website, just so we have a quick view, especially for those online, to see what our website is now, and then peer that next to each other from where we're going next on our new website. So I'll switch over. And let me, I apologize, web audience, but we're going to shrink us down a little bit. And I'm handing it over.
So hopefully you can still hear me. Pretty sure anybody that works with the district or is watching right now is familiar with the website. As you can see, we have our menu across the top. There are several items in it. You'll see why that's relevant in just a couple minutes. Slideshow, kind of small. News, events, and calendars, all hidden behind tabs. And then featured video and Twitter, so our social media integration hidden, again, behind tabs. And then down here in our footer, several links, looks like a bookmarks list. And again, why I'm mentioning this will be relevant once you see the new website, so...
Ready for the new website?
Oh, sure.
Awesome. And one other thing I want to point out, if you scroll right back up, Joe.
Surely.
You may notice at the top, we also have, as Joe mentioned, redundancy, duplication. So you'll see a header at the top, top, top part where it says, "Students, Parents, Staff, Community." You'll also see the same options right below that, and again, in the colored squares right below that. So we have several places that you can get to, and we want to clean that up. So I'm going to switch over to our stage environment right now. This is not live for people to view, so we're going to hide and mask the URL, but you're still going to be able to see the content and compare.
So this is the new website. As you can see at the top, we have some relevant links, but that are more tools than anything else. Right below that, you have audience-based navigation, students, parents, district, community. So answer the question, who are you? Next to that, we have a very prominent search. And I wanted to point this out, that part of this search widget is built using our search analytics, so we can identify what people are searching for and pre-populate those searches here. So these are actually the top three search topics that people look for on the website right now. Below that, you have a much more prominent slideshow. If I get the mouse off of it, it'll continue to slide. Below that, you have featured information that puts an emphasis on timely information. Some statistics about the districts, and our news, featured video, calendar, and upcoming events. And as I pointed out on the current website, a lot of this is actually buried behind tabs. So you have to use the mouse or your finger, depending on what kind of device you're using, to navigate the website. A lot of this information is now surfaced, so you don't have to do that. And then down to the footer, which has been simplified. Okay, going back up, I wanted to also show you the schools page because that has been vastly reworked. Okay. All right, so the current website, the schools page, is basically just a static list of text. It groups the schools by level, so you have elementary, middle, and high schools. And while the new page does that as well in some ways, it's a much less static appearance. We're actually using the schools logos. We're listing contact information, and of course, their locations to bring that information to the surface as well. And we've also added a way to search and filter based on where the school is, what type of school it is. So if you wanted to search for, for example, all elementary schools in Daltona, first search by the city, Daltona, and then down to the school type, and now you have just the elementary schools in Daltona. That's something that you can't do in our current website. And we did this thinking about people who are outside of the district, who might be considering moving here. They're not going to be familiar with just the names of the schools on the current website, so we wanted to add a way to quickly and easily search for them.
I'm going to switch back, and I have Ms. Schultz talk about the last two slides. And again, when we have questions, if you want me to switch back and forth between the site, we'll be glad to do that.
Well, as you can see, just the look of it is so much better. It just, it really is. Just when I first started this district not too long ago, that was something I noticed some of the other districts are really, they were having, they're popping up these websites that look great. And I think this competes with or even outshines what I've seen. It's great. So, and what I really like is there are a number of ways where we can post things finally. Right now, we have a number of things that are on the slide, you know, you have to click on. There are so many different spots on there. So more opportunities on the page to post positive stories, post upcoming events. We put, we have, right now, we have a news tab and an event tab, and it kind of gets buried under things. Here, we had the one segment under the main slideshow where they have all these opportunities. We can put the flyers up there. There's a job fair going on. There's the sports physical event at Daytona International Speedway. Also, our student and staff profile videos. It's, they've kind of been buried in the website we have now, I feel like. I can post it on our Facebook and Twitter, but now we have a place to put those. Promoting our social media pages, right now, it just, you can find a little tab on the far left bottom of our website, but this actually allows us to highlight and show our social media pages. Right now, we have Facebook and Twitter that we actively use, but going into this next school year, I really want to push Instagram and get the attention of students. Because there have been a number of events that high school students are invited to, and it's hard to reach out to them sometimes from the district level. So anyway. Partnerships with Advent Health and the Tortugas, we can highlight those. And school calendars, as you mentioned, and job vacancies. And overall, I just, I really like the look. I think it's going to be a lot more user-friendly. And I have had people, and I have friends who've moved into this area, who are looking for schools and they want to find out about them. It's much easier to use with that, so, thanks.
So where do we go from here? We would love to launch the website this month. However, we didn't want to come tonight and say, "We're launching tomorrow!" So, so much of the conversation, right? Tomorrow! Much of the conversation tonight and questions obviously should be around, how do we message this? How will we communicate? How will we let individuals who are currently on our website now know that the website will be changing and the navigation will, while streamlined, will look different? And we all know change is difficult to accept, and so we have answers for you as far as what we're looking to do to communicate it, as well as what we're looking to put into our current website to help with that transition for the time that we pull the trigger and go on it. So we'll look for that date. We'll talk about that tonight. Again, we're thinking about two weeks, but if it needs to spread and go out, we're able to accommodate that. The website is ready to go, and this is in a live state. We're just in a stage area.
So I hear you saying you're ready to take a few questions at this time?
Watch!
There, I love it. I love it. All right. Do we have questions? Anybody want to ask a question to our presenters? Ms. Cuthbert, yeah?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. It truly addresses our vision statement, 21st century education. And also, it brings us, I mean, we're 20% already through this century, and thank you for bringing us further up to date. And it's also very wonderful with our new motto, with our new little logo, as well as our new computer systems. So it all seems to go hand in hand. So thank you for all the many hours of work, because I have no clue how you did this. So thank you. Thank you very much.
Question from Mr. Cologne.
Some of our high schools have really fancy websites that they manage. Will the links take them to that website?
Yes.
So they still maintain that? And then the next question I have, is there a platform for those little least technologically advanced schools where they could use our platform as their website? In other words, use the same platform?
Yes, and we're actually very excited to bring that to them. We're going to build the new school websites on this same platform, probably using this template as a starting point, and then building from there based on what they want, and then making sure that we build it so that the least technical person among them can manage their website easily.
Remember, he said that. The least techno... Did you have a question? Ms. Wright.
So if I heard you correctly, you wanted direction from us about when to launch?
I guess, definitely a conversation tonight. We're ready to go any day, but it's about pace, right? So we for sure want to make sure we are giving our community time, which is why we want to present it tonight, so that way it's able to re-watch, listen to, see what the new features are. But then we want to also post on our current website when that date would be and provide information on how the new website would look, even access into.
So I would kind of beg to differ, because we should be asking you, what is your recommendation?
Excellent! So I'll take that as, we could say, "Let's go live before the night."
You have a slide for that, too, that says recommendation?
Recommendations taken. I think two weeks would be ideal. That gets us close to our next board meeting, which would be great to see if there's any feedback that's presented, whether it's through public comment or whether it's given and provided to us in that time. But at the same time, it gives us also ample amount of time at the end of the school year, of course, which is why we came this late. We didn't want to come up and run through a graduation change and where are people going right now that they can be confused, especially with professional learning occurring right in the first week after we're done. So we wanted to buffer that time, but definitely get it out there sooner rather than later. So we're thinking two weeks would be ideal, but if we had to push it to three weeks, just in case, we wanted to give an extra week after next board meeting, we could, but ideally, I think we're rearing to go.
We are.
So I would say two weeks.
Well...
June 11th.
I think one of the things that frustrates everybody going to websites is when they're not current. You know, stale, outdated. Soon as you get on a business that does that, it's like, eh, forget it, you know? I'm not going there. If they don't even have the wherewithal to update their website, you know, they've got 19, 2017 calendar or something. So who is it that, who is it that is the sort, that funnels through all the information? There must be so much information that everybody wants on the website, and I just don't know who is the...
There is. It's not, it's not me. I lead the team. It's actually Tom Melton, our web content specialist. The people that generate the content, that's people who work in the departments and in the schools. They create it, and then they send it, mostly, mostly they publish it themselves, to be completely honest, but we're always there to help them with whatever they might need as far as guidance on, you know, will this format well on a website? Will this, you know, warp the, you know, warp an image or something so that it doesn't appear the way that I want it to? Same thing goes with accessibility requirements. As I said, we're going to be adding some training modules to that, and we're certainly going to be there to help them through that.
So, and does that same person have the responsibility of taking things off the web? Because now it's, that event's happened, like graduations are over, we don't need to be telling people when graduations are.
Yes, in that training, every site, every department has a webmaster, and that webmaster is who we train and who we provide information to, to keep their website relevant and up to date and current and accessible. And much of the work that was done over the last two years, really the last year for the matter, was meeting with each department. And Mr. Melton was instrumental in sitting down and finding time in the busy schedules that we all have to really take a good comb through each of the current district website, all the documents, all the resources, all the links that link to another page that talked about the same thing on a different page. And it was very painstaking, but at the same time, it was very eye-opening to see, as Joe mentioned, 60% reduction. If it was 10,000, we cut out 6,000 documents, and we have 4,000 remaining. And they're not all great documents, but they're at least now visible to the departments. It's right in front, and we're going to work to keep that up to date.
That's nice. I think it's great. So, well, let me ask the board, how do you all feel? Do you think, are we giving him the green light to just proceed as they see fit? And is there anyone that doesn't want to do that? Yes, Jamie? Ms. Haynes?
No. I think it's wonderful. I did look at the calendar, though, and I kind of like starting things at the beginning of a week versus in the middle. And so I was thinking, you know, if, instead of starting it on Tuesday, June 11th, or Wednesday, June 12th, why don't you just start it on Monday, June 17th? You know, because if you're saying you want to give people a chance to, you know, if they want to come say something about it or whatever, that was just my thought.
Yeah. Yeah. Certainly. And Mr. Cologne?
And the only other thing is there are things, for example, Volusia Lawrence and all those kinds of things that we know people are going to be looking for. So if we could purpose, I mean, even if it's just for that, you know, so it's not dug behind them, so it's easy to find, that'd be awesome. Especially the things that we know in the next two weeks are going to be relevant.
Correct. And some of the things we're going to do is put a banner on our current webpage, outline it. We're going to put a short video so that we're demonstrating what the new site looks like, where you should look to navigate if you're a parent, if you're a student, if you're a district or a community. So we're going to put all those pieces into place, and with a three-week window, I think that's ample time to hear feedback, capture feedback, as well as provide ample communication for it.
Okay. Ms. Wright, you good with that?
I'm fine. I was just wanting to know what their recommendation was.
Okay. All right, then, I think, yes.
June 17th is perfect. I was going to, I too wanted to do the beginning of the week, so I said 10th, but you wanted a little extra time just to get all the kinks. So 17th is a great idea. May I ask a question?
Yes.
Whose idea was just to change it? Because our website has been like this for a long time. So who's got it started?
She's sitting.
I'll take credit. No, not...
So we started the conversation about two years ago, and much of the conversation also stemmed around accessibility, right? This is big in the nature of where we are in technology, to make sure anything is accessible across all devices, all device types, and the functionality for those that need it. And so that was a driving factor to start beginning to search for a new website platform, much of one that's open source, something that's capable of providing what we need to extend even further, right? But it was a conversation nonetheless about two years ago that we brought it up, and then it was just work on adopting and having a conversation around the district.
Okay, thank you.
So we'll say it's everybody.
Thank you. Mr. Superintendent.
Tom, could you stand up a minute? This is the unsung hero. He went through so many documents, and I mean, document by document, and sitting with departments and saying, "Is this a value? Nope, then it needs to go." And Tom, I appreciate it. Thank you.
Yeah, way to go, Tom. Okay, you got it. Thank you. Thank you. Very exciting.
Thank you all for...
Very exciting. Awesome. All right, we're on item 21.01 MOA. Sarah Lee Morrissey? Ms. Morrissey, before we, just hang on one second.
Is there anybody? Yes. 21.01. Okay.
Ms. Morrissey.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, and Mr. Russell, in your honor. With me tonight are Mr. Daniel Simpson with the Florida Department of Transportation, and Mr. Rick Mara, who is with a traffic transportation engineering consulting firm local to Volusia County and does a lot of work with FDOT. This item that is on your agenda is a memorandum of understanding between the school board and Florida Department of Transportation. This is the result of working together for pretty close to a year... This is the result of working together for pretty close to a year now with Mr. Simpson and his representatives, as well as with members of the Mainland High School team. And we did hire our own traffic engineer to assist us with this effort. This is actually an effort that began as the result of Representative Santiago, as a result of a tragedy that happened by a young woman crossing Nova Road near 92. And she was a high school student. So this is for a pedestrian safety project. It is not just for Mainland High School. The project actually will also benefit those students going to and from Daytona State College, pedestrians in general, crossing the area between White Street and Clyde Morris. For those of you that are familiar with 92 and have been out in front of our school at any time during the school day, I know that you have seen our students crossing in a number of different locations. And so this project seeks to address that issue and create a designated pedestrian crossing. And I am going to ask my colleagues, Mr. Simpson and Mr. Morrow, to go into the details. I would say to you that it's very important in order for this project to move forward to receive construction funding, that a memorandum of understanding be approved. Construction documents, construction funding cannot proceed without a memorandum of understanding. The department has already obtained an understanding executed by Daytona State College as well as the owner of the shopping center that is just east of Mainland High School. This has been a challenging project. I think that's a fair statement. Because it's not just looking at pedestrian crossings between White Street and Clyde Morris. We're looking at vehicular travel. We, of course, are looking at what's on our side of 92, what's going on at Mainland High School, and then everything that happens beyond that. I will say that by working together, and these gentlemen have indulged us significantly, I would have to say that the scope has probably expanded as a result of working with us. But we do think that we are going to be able to address some issues onsite at Mainland High School that will help us with circulation and more particularly address some security issues. So we will be doing some work onsite whenever this project moves forward. And at this point, I'd like to turn it over to Mr. Simpson and Mr. Morrow.
Good evening. If you would, please identify yourselves so we know.
Yep.
Sure. I'm Rick Morrow, work for Traffic Engineering Data Solutions in DeBarry.
And I'm Daniel Simpson, and I work for Florida Department of Transportation and our consultant project management department.
Thank you.
So you see, I have just a few exhibits to show you to help explain the project and hopefully answer your questions. First off, I want to just point out that what you see in the colored green is actually existing pavement where we are proposing to take out the pavement. And so just to clarify that, to, to make sure you see what we're looking at here. So the purpose of the project is to put in the pedestrian hybrid beacon, which I'll explain how that operates. And it's a crosswalk with red lights. It starts off flashing and it turns red to stop traffic. Now, one of the, there's a couple of different issues here that made it challenging, as was mentioned. First, we are roughly 700 feet away from the very busy intersection of Clyde Morris, which you see right on the left edge of your picture. And traffic, as you see here, just in this shot, that is just a random picture, you can see where the traffic is backed up as, as it is starting to move to the west. And it does frequently back up through this intersection. So that made for a challenge to the type of solutions that we could look at. Another challenge is that on the bottom side of the picture, you see the, what is currently acceleration lane. And we did not want to have a situation where people are accelerating and trying to merge into traffic right where pedestrians are trying to cross. And so part of this is to take out that acceleration lane. People could still make the, the northbound right turn from Clyde Morris, but it would not be turn and then merge in. They would turn at the signal instead. So students then would still need to cross three lanes in each direction. And so we see that then the next challenge was dealing with the two different driveways that were there going into the high school. And that's where, as Sarah Lee mentioned, we worked very, for, for quite a while to figure out a solution that, that benefited the school and allowed for the safe crossing. If we want to go to the next slide? The next slide is just zooming in to, to that entrance. And so what we see here is that we're proposing to take out the driveway that is to the west and that is typically gated. There's actually a gate there that is closed the majority of the time and make that at the main pedestrian walkway leading up to that pedestrian hybrid beacon. Then also to notice, just to point out, that at the eastern driveway, there are some dark gray shaded in that southbound right turn lane. That would be new pavement. And then there is the kind of beige colored, somewhat triangular shape down there with the blue rectangle in it. That would be a raised concrete island. And then the blue rectangle represents the same size as the guard shack that is currently on the other side of the campus. And the thought there was, this would be an opportunity for, and I'll let you go into detail on this, but for a guard shack potential to be placed there. One thing to point out on this slide is that where the, the signal pole, which is shown in black, you'll notice the yellow rectangle around it. That is a piece of land that currently belongs to school, school board. And so that is where the memorandum of understanding includes donating that to the state so that that mass arm could be placed on the state property. And that's significant. There is green space and closer to the road, I'm sure you've noticed that. And you might be saying, why wouldn't you just put it there? What is not obvious here is that there are significant underground power lines because there are no overhead power at this location, saw underground, and also multiple water lines and other communication lines. And they are staggered through there. So to not disrupt the community by shutting those off, that is it. And then also, just keep in mind that when you put the push button, the button that the students would push in this location, then they are waiting farther away from the roadway. Actually, if you go back one slide, I'll just mention the other part of the memorandum of understanding. If you see, it's not labeled, but on the north side of the road, just to the west of the tennis court is Highland. That roadway. That roadway used to extend to the south and, and there was a right of way through there. So there is a missing piece of property that the school board currently owns that the state does not. It's about 70 feet wide by nine feet, nine feet by 70 feet. And it's approximately where the sidewalk is. And so while we were in the middle of this process, we, we all agreed that it would be beneficial to take that 70-foot-long piece of sidewalk and make sure that's in state ownership rather than school board ownership. That's the sidewalk out along US 92. And then finally, in the last slide, just to give you a visual of what a pedestrian hybrid beacon looks like. In this particular example, I found there's only two signal heads. In, in our case, there would be three signal heads across because we have three lanes. There'd be one in each lane. And remember, I noted this is different than a regular traffic signal because of the close proximity to Clyde Morris and how traffic would back up. So the typical way this operates is it stays dark when there are not any pedestrians nearby. When a pedestrian pushes the button, and there's, there's the, the sequence down there, the flow chart at the bottom, in the bottom right, but the, it starts flashing yellow first. So if, as you're approaching the intersection, you would see three flashing yellow lights overhead. Then those flashing yellow lights turn solid yellow, like a normal traffic signal has a yellow before it goes red. And then you would see six red lights all up there well when the pedestrian has the walk sign to start walking across the road. Now, the key to this that's different from a regular traffic signal is then, after the pedestrian has had opportunity to start crossing the road and get most of the way across, then it changes to the last stage there, which is like a wig wag where it's on, off, on, off. And so basically, you would see three lights basically dancing right and left. And under that condition, and with the sign up there, the drivers still have to stop. But once the pedestrian has gone by, they then, after stopping, are allowed to, to move. So it becomes then like a stop sign just until the pedestrian phase is over and then it goes back to dark.
I'd like to just mention, so there's been a lot of meetings and coordination to date. This has not been an easy project to get everybody to agree on. There will be, whenever the construction funding moves forward, part of the coordination is that a portion, the portion on the school property, which will be funded by DOT, has to occur in the summer. So there's a big coordination piece there. There's also a big coordination piece with the school itself because there will be some changes with flow during the school day. Part of the point here is that the single point of entry during the school day will now be on 92, coming in this driveway. We will be responsible for relocating the guard shack to this location. Right now, the parking that's in front of the school is all reserved for leadership. This would all become visitor parking. And so one of the things that troubles the school right now, if you are familiar with going there during the school day, is you're coming in on 92. Yes, there's the guard shack there. You check in, but then you continue on and no one's really sure where you're parking. Yes, the campus is supposed to be locked down, but you can truly park wherever you want. And who knows how long it is till you get to that front door. One of the things that this will do will keep all visibility right there in the front between both whoever is manning the guard shack. And then this is, of course, our main entrance. One of the other things that we've done here, and again, this is being funded by DOT, is we will now have an actual pedestrian pathway that takes our students from the front entrance. So if they're leaving during the school day for DSC, they'd be coming out from the front and heading this way. And so we thought that was an important piece as well. So the school will have its own educational campaign that it will need to undertake. So there'll be a lot of coordination between both FDOT, the district, and the school. I don't think I have anything else. Oh, I would like to mention, Ms. Wright, last meeting, you talked a little bit about signs, LED. And this project was the primary reason I wanted to see how we resolve this project before moving forward. And so part of what I see us doing is the district is when we move forward with the piece that will involve working on the guard shack, I think we would also move forward at that time to improve the sign.
Board members, questions, comments? I would like to ask you about the, the capacity for stacking the students while they're waiting for the light? Do you have enough there? Have you, I'm sure you've given that thought about how many at peak times can be out there to want to cross?
From, from the studies we've seen, the, the students have been crossing kind of throughout the day. I have not been out there for hours and at, well, I have been out there for hours. I have not done a thorough study though to tell you that there's never more than 10 or 20 or give you a certain number. I can tell you what I've seen is in the range of less than five. But, but perhaps more concerning, what I've seen is that they're regular and that they continue.
It just keeps going. It just trickles out.
Well, it, from my perspective of watching, what it appears is that, especially with the dual enrollment opportunities that exist here, that there are, just throughout the day, opportunities and reasons for the students to cross. And in this also, this location, you can't really see it super well from these exhibits, but it also ties into the Daytona State sidewalk system. If we were to shift even just a little bit further to the east, there's a big field there that the students would have to walk all the way around, whereas this ties into the sidewalk that goes around the left side or the west side of the tennis court.
And that pedestrian, I think, Sarah Lee, you mentioned it as a way for the students, when they exit school, there's a pedestrian sidewalk you're putting in. Is that sidewalk going to be wide enough?
Right now, I think it's just shown as five feet wide. We have not actually talked about the width. I mean, truthfully, we could leave that whole driveway there. I mean, it's 20 feet wide, but-
I don't want the whole driveway because it encourages a vehicle.
Right. Right.
Well, again, you know, it's, you know what I'm saying? It's just all about when, when are those peak, peak moments? I don't know whether at lunchtime, there's a-
Well, we did do, our, our traffic consultant went out there and did counts. I don't happen to have them off the top of my head.
Okay. Well, as long as you have counts, then I'm sure you'll, you'll figure that all, all in to the final design to make it more-
For school input as well.
And Mr. Cologne?
So I think that the lighting system that you have is really, really neat. However, that is new to everybody. I've never seen anything like that. And so I think that part of our work is going to be working with the chambers, working with the local government, because folks aren't going to know what to do with that light when it starts blinking. I mean, it's just so different. I've never seen anything like it, other than, you know, all these red lights going. You know, of course, I, I, this is a great project. It's much needed and I appreciate Representative Santiago and all he's done to get this going. But I think there really has to be, you know, when, especially when you think about Daytona being the world's most famous beach in the world, that talks about tourists. And so when they come to town and they've never seen a light like this, what are they going to do with it? Well, and they're not quite sure what they're going to do with it. So I, I just think that that's probably going to be key because again, it's just going to be really confusing, despite the big sign in the middle. I promise you, you know, when you're just turning that corner and it's 700 feet before you see these lights blinking, what, what do you do with that? So just something, I'm sure FDOT's got that under consideration, but that's just something we're really going to have to, to keep kids from getting run over because right now-
Well, and like we, when we spent some time with Dr. Salerno, and as I mentioned, there's a very big piece of this that is educational. And certainly, we'll be working very closely with the school to educate parents and students, but I think your point is a good one. But we're members of the Transportation Planning Organization, so we've got ways to communicate.
We have a voice. We do. Yes, Ms. Wright?
But to your point, actually, many of our tourists, if they're on the beach side, they have these already in Daytona Beach shores. Several other municipalities have this now on A1A. So they may be more familiar than those on Mainland because there, there are several already there. With that said though, and this is a wish, so I'm just making a wish list, but it would be nice to actually see an over path versus a crosswalk because it is such a dangerous intersection and with the amount of traffic that funnels down that thoroughfare. That's a great start. I'm appreciative. I attended Mainland. I, I walked to school, so I get it. But eventually, I would love to see a crosswalk.
Over the top.
Yes, Ms. Cuthbert.
I, I have two. I can see, before this goes into effect, I can see one of those digital big signs that you see on the freeway announcing a new traffic change. We could put that up for 30 days in advance, letting the people know who usually travel that route. That would be a, a good system both ways. And then the second one is what time would you like to put this into motion? What idea do you have? You know, I think first day of school might be a little difficult because of the traffic and getting, nobody's going to pay attention. They're trying to find out where to park. They're trying to find out where to park. So when, when would this go into effect, do you think?
So currently, we plan with our schedule.
I can hear you.
Currently with our schedule now, with the right-of-way donation process, we're looking at, I believe, the summer of 2021.
Summer of 2021?
Correct.
Okay.
So beginning of school year.
Okay.
August, correct.
We've got time to work on.
Sounds like it.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, we thank you. Do we have a recommendation here from the superintendent?
The superintendent recommends approval of the memorandum of agreement by and between the School Board of Volusia County and the Florida Department of Transportation to establish and memorialize the commitments and responsibilities associated with the pedestrian safety improvement on US 92 for mainland high school students.
Thank you, you've heard the recommendation. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, second?
Second.
Second, Ms. Cuthbert, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And those opposed, and the motion carries unanimously. Thank you, thank you for being here.
Thank you.
We appreciate it. Looks like a great project. Improve the safety for our students. Cards on this one, this item is involving safety and security of students. And I have Eliza, Eliza Crezo?
Crespo.
Crespo.
Yes, how are you doing?
Hello, hi. Three or four others.
School boards, yeah, that's, I liked it, I mean, it's a, I got a big, big concern, the biggest concern ever. It comes back from 2012 to present now. In 2012, I, I, I heard this guy, his name was Stephen Hamilton. He worked for, for the, the, the Department of ESOL in, in the Daytona Lake Elementary. And he was fully American, know, when you have an ESOL department, you have to know a language of, of Spanish to be in that department. There was a kid there, he was autism, he had autism. And three incidents happened with this kid that, um, one day the mom came and picked him up and the kid was walking funny. I never happened, this never happened in my school. And at the end of the day, the kid started bleeding. This happened, I, I went to, I went to talk to, I talked, that's why I'm here because I was sent by Randy, Randy Cosette, that's from the state board over in Tallahassee. He said, you're going to come over here because I don't have enough evidence, but you're going to bring it over to the board. The kid started bleeding and the mom, you know, she's got nervous and the kid got nervous at the same time. So the dad, the dad thought he was constipated. And he got nervous, let that go. About a week, the kid started touching the mom. And I said, what's going on? You don't do these to me, I mean, um, and a week after that, it comes up that he says, Mister, Mister Hamilton, every time he grabs me, um, um, something slimy comes to the back. We're talking about, this is the biggest work, this is the biggest thing ever. I'm, as a parent, I'm very concerned of what's going on in the schools. I mean, you can get, you can do a background, but I mean, I, I don't send my kid to a school to get, and to get molested, to get, I mean, and especially now that the schools are fenced in. I mean, how can you? And the five years that, I mean, we've been around, we've been seeing more often in the schools, sex offenders here, there, going back and forth. The schools, it's, and the district is hiring them without checking, well, what's going on? I mean, so come back, Mister Stephen Hamilton, he got released from the school and went straight to transportation.
Eliza, I'm sorry, your, your time is up.
Yeah, but I mean, I got, this is something bigger than these.
I understand, I understand, but your time is up. If you want to come back another time, you'd be welcome to.
No, I did already, I'm, I'm just saying that.
I understand, your time is up, sir.
My kid, your kid wasn't ready.
Your time is up, sir, your time is up. Thank you. Our next speaker is Karen Weinich, Weinich? Weinrich, Karen, I'm sorry if I.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm coming to you today both as a teacher and as a parent to talk about the law that allows you to choose to arm teachers. From what I've read in the papers, I, it sounds like you're all opposed, but I wanted to come here to urge you not to allow the arming of teachers. I don't, I don't feel like more firearms make children safer, I think it makes them less safe. I want to tell you a story, this is a story that happened last year in my classroom. We had vehicle day, we had a police officer there. Got all my kindergarteners, we're talking with the police officer. And one of my children, just standing there, goes over to him, he says, oh, I see you have a gun. And he touched his gun. This is a trained law enforcement. And my child was able to do that, I mean, we, you know, pulled him away, but that's a trained law enforcement officer and that happened. It shocked him, it shocked all of us. To do that and have teachers armed is, is asking for trouble. We do not need more guns in schools. And as a parent, if that were to go through, I would like to be able to know who is armed so I can choose how my child not in that classroom. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. All right, so now it is time for the discussion and this will be coming forward. Is this going to be with Stacey, Mister Manning and Mister Aiken? And I see they are huddling at the moment there, so, hello, hello. Thank you for assisting the previous gentleman there with his concern.
Dr. Hall's out there getting some information, we'll follow up on that one.
Thank you, yeah, I appreciate that.
Chairman Persis, board members, Mister Russell, thank you for this opportunity tonight. My name is Greg Aiken, Chief Operating Officer. I have Mister Stacy Manning, our general counsel, here with me this evening to go over the, what would be your recommendation for Support Services Policy 510, specifically our safety and security policy. As you remember, last time we went to, to advertise this, we, we actually took everything from Senate Bill 7026 and 7030, everything's in this, in this Support Services Policy that meets Florida statute and administrative rule that's currently out there today. I received no comments from anyone from my side on anything questionable about this policy. Mister Manning, you want to add anything?
No, I haven't either, I've gone through this and reviewed it. It's, it's very thorough, it does capture all the changes that the legislature made this year so that this is a current and updated policy.
Thank you. Mister Superintendent, do you have a recommendation?
The superintendent recommends adoption of proposed amendments to Policy 510, Safety and Security of Students, Personnel, and Property.
Thank you, you've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion? Ms. Wright, is that a motion?
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Wright, that's a motion, do I need a second? I need a second, yes.
Second.
Mister Cologne, thank you, is there any discussion? Ms. Cuthbert, you have a question?
So this is going to make sure that we have our guardian program next year, correct?
So, yes, so.
Just putting it layman's terms.
Yes, ma'am, so one of the, one of the sections in here talks about the guardian program. In the next presentation, we'll kind of get more in deep, depth on the guardian program. But yes, ma'am, that would be the guardian program as part of the school board approval as it was last year, and now it's in policy.
Okay, thank you, I'm just making everything nice and clear. Okay, thank you so much.
Okay, we got a motion, we got a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye, and those opposed, and the motion carries. And now we move on to guardians, correct?
Uh, yes, sir, so Chairman Persis, board members, Mister Russell, thank you for this opportunity to talk to you about Senate Bill 7030. I want to do a little history because we have two new board members. And so I want to go back a year, so we're going to travel back to last May and then June of last year prior to the school district approving, the board actually approved us hiring guardians. We had the option during Senate Bill 7026 to have non-instructional staff be certified and trained through the Volusia County Sheriff's Department. This board at that point in time made the decision to go ahead and hire either retired or honorable discharged military and law enforcement agencies to, and put in position, those positions on our campuses, elementary schools, in and out, a couple of middle schools, and we do have a few at our high schools as well. So what I want to do tonight is tell you exactly what changed in legislation that we're going to have to come, come in compliance with, or new options, I should say, set forth for us. So I'll spend a few minutes, I got about six slides here. At the end of that, we can discuss and I'll answer any questions you may have. If this, all right, what's going on here? I don't know why I did it that way, so I'll go next, I'll look at their technology. All right, so 7030, what it does is expands our guardian program. Now it allows for teachers to perform, that perform classroom duties to serve as guardians if the board so chooses. They have the same requirements that we currently have in place today with our guardian program, which is 144 hours, 12 hours of diversity training. They have to have initial drug testing, subsequent drug testing randomly thereafter. Has to be appointed by the principal. And in this case, now with 7030, also, the charter schools governing board must approve a guardian for their school, right? So it kind of changes a little bit for school districts. And then obviously, as it is now, ongoing training, weapon inspection, firearm qualifications annually. All of my guardians through the classes we went last time, June 4th, we're all going to be requalified. There are three of us that qualified early, but there, others will go forward. Just like we currently have now, the sheriff's department is on board with the guardian program. He helped us put this together very quickly through the guidance of Mister Russell and then blended, in my opinion, a very good solid program we currently have today. Accolades out there to all the staff that are there. One of the things that it added this year in 7030, it talks about second degree felony for false impersonation of a school guardian, which is good. So as you know, our guardians are identified, they have on the back of their shirts, it says guardian, right? And then, and we want to make sure that when law enforcement responds, they know who's there, they know their partner. We're a tool for them if they have to respond to one of our campuses. So this will hopefully deter anyone from impersonating them. Threat assessment team is nothing new, I think what it does for us, and if you look at the third bullet down, the, the Department of Education is going to have a threat assessment instrument to be able to be used by our threat assessment, school level threat assessment teams. That tool has not been developed yet by DOE. They're, they're looking at and probably will approve, in my opinion, the Sandy Hook Promise, SAI. It's the Safe, Safety Assessments and Intervention Checklist that they currently have. We have that currently, we utilize that currently right now in the school district and is going to be part of our SIS moving forward. Access report, and it goes, and it goes to the last bullet as well as adopting the zero policy. Access reporting is, is now the responsibility and they want to make sure that it's happening at every school, in every school district. And they're going to hold the superintendent accountable if they deem it that the school district is trying to hide something that is not reportable to the state. So they have that now, it's actually spelled out very well in, in 7030, very clear. And I think districts are going to start following that process as well. It also defines, on the Zero Talents, defines the, the principal's roles and incident reporting. If it's a crime, you got to tell law enforcement. If it's a student discipline issue, you handle it internally. So it helps us define some roles as well. Threat, we have a active assailant, what we call Code Red 2, active shooter drills and, and protocol. What it does now, it says that we are required to certify that every employee has went through an active shooter plan and understands that plan, their role and their responsibility. And we have to have that done prior to October 1st of every year. And so therefore, we have some documentation that we'll have to put in place. We also have to conduct drills and Mister Russell, through his guidance, he actually helped us develop our elementary. We, we got ahold of all of our PTA and all of our DAC members and said, here's some videos, this is how we want to roll out our active shooter, we did it age appropriate. So we're already meeting that mandate, we'll continue on with that moving forward. And the last one is, and this is kind of hard for people because a student can make a threat, doesn't mean they pose to be a threat, right? So if somebody can say something that's harmful to someone else and, and, and parents in the community feel it's a major threat, that, you know, the students should be out of the, the school community altogether. What 7030 basically says is that threat assessment team has to do an assessment of that threat, make a determination whether that student poses a threat. If they do pose a threat, then we get law enforcement involved and we start putting in other, other measures to, to help that child through a mental health screening and evaluation. Other provisions, talks about Fortify Florida, we've already publicized that. Year-to-date, as of today, 118 Fortify Florida tips here for Florida, 948 statewide. This tool is growing. What 7030 basically says is we have to advertise it, says several things. So we do publicize it on our webpage, but it also says we have to install, install it on all of our mobile devices and computers so it's there, so it's easy for them to get on the computer and do their, their, their tip back to us. It also says that those tips are actually confidential in nature, therefore they're not for public release. So we want our, our students and our community to give us that information so we can really concentrate on the prevention part of this, instead of being more reactive. Facet is a tool, it's assessment tool that all schools have to complete, that, nothing changed there. The main thing that the Department of Education is going to do between now and whenever, right, hopefully they get it done fairly soon, is looking at hardening and, uh, harm mitigation work group that will look at what's needed on our campuses, where do we spend our money? What's the best bang for our buck, basically, right? Single point access, camera systems, locking systems, what is that? And they're going to say, this is what we should be doing in school districts. We hope to have something out from them fairly soon. Now it's up to you to, to discuss the actions. So I think the first bullet that I had talking about teachers is the, is the item that I need action on. The other ones, we're already doing, it's already in our policy you just approved a few minutes ago. We move forward with making sure we meet all those mandates.
Well, let me ask you a question that's been asked to me.
Sure.
About the teachers as guardians. Would, is this an, an option that the district would use in place of the guardian we already have on staff now? Or would the, or would the teacher, armed teacher guardian be in addition to the guardian that's at the school? Am I making sense?
Yes, so what you're asking is, is, is could we, to answer your question, the answer is yes. We can continue having the guardians that we have today. We can also, if the board so chooses, to allow, based on the recommendation from the superintendent and passing the background check and everything else they have to do, allow some teachers to actually carry. Some of the concerns that I would personally have would be, how do we identify the teachers when the first responders responding to an issue on campus? Guardians identified.
I don't even want to get into all that. I, I just wanted to make sure that the public understood that, that the teacher guardian, if the district or whatever district chooses to go that way, doesn't replace the, the other person or the SRO or the deputy, it's just supplemental, let's say.
Okay, yeah, this board, if you remember, and I know you were on there, I know two of you were not, but this board said we wanted school resource officers and deputies, and Mister Russell came out with that. Unfortunately, we can't do that. So we came up with the guardian program, which is a hybrid based on what Senate Bill 7026 stated. We have a very good program.
And it's worked out great.
It has, and so, and not using any administrators, letting them do what they need to do.
Let me not take any more time.
Sure, no, no, fine.
Yes, Mister Manning, go ahead.
Yes, Stacy Manning, General Counsel for the district. Just to clarify, earlier on, Mister Aiken had indicated that the charter schools would, would be in charge of appointing their own guardians. To clarify, the, the district would be making available to all of the charter schools, all of the options so they can choose the guardian program, they can choose that it be teachers or not be teachers. So all of the options that are available to the district, if the district makes available to the charter schools. to the charter schools, unless other direction is given, that, that's the way the district will handle that, as far as the charter schools go.
Good point.
Okay.
Thank you.
Questions from the board? Mr. Cologne.
So, what, going back to our SROs and our middle school, I know the sheriff was trying to cut back a little bit, have we had any motion on that, that we're aware of, that they may be cutting back at all?
So, talked to Sheriff Chitwood, you know, we had 17 Voluscan Sheriff's deputies on our campuses this year. We did our pilot program, started in March, right, where we have three middle schools and an alternative school currently right now that we have a guardian at. Due to the shortages of the Voluscan Sheriff's Department, they're requesting, based on our next contract that will be coming in front of the board, to reduce that by another four. And so they would staff just the high schools, and then we would staff the four additional middle schools, excluding the Daytona Beach and some others that we have covered by other jurisdictions. So that's going to be, that's their, their recommendations for us to, to look, to move forward, to reducing by four.
And so, any rules that we set as a district don't necessarily affect the charter schools, they will still have the ability to decide for them what they want to do, correct? And that's what I thought I understood.
That is correct. They have four options, right? So the school resource officer, or deputy, safe school officer, right? They have the guardian program if they wish to, and they can actually contract with a security agency that has a license, D or G license, and I don't, you know, I mean, I didn't bring that forward, but that is, that would be one of their options. Same with us, we could do that as well.
And that's not to say that this board, and I'm not suggesting y'all do, but could limit their options, but that would have repercussions.
Yes.
And we could get into those if that's something that.
There was a mention of state training, does that include substitutes as well? When you said every employee, does that include every employee?
Yes, so you're, we're talking about the active assailant training. The answer is yes. Any, any full, full-time, and/or in this case, substitute teacher needs to go through an active assailant training, which we just completed, our substitute training not too long ago. So we'll be doing it again next year, it's annual training.
And, do we have in policy any consequences for schools who may not be following the plan? Where you all go and do those threat assessments and continuously, that door is always left open, these kids are always going that way, there's never anybody there. Do we have anything in policy that can help lead some of that?
Yeah, so, the policy this approves, Support Services Policy 510, clearly outlines the responsibilities, and it says that everyone should move in that direction. What we do with our assessments is we look at, we take a snapshot in time. This is the date we come in, we look at, we evaluate them. If there's any deficiencies found, we actually give them 30 days to correct those deficiencies, could be shorter, depends on what the issue is. And then we do no notice inspections thereafter. If there's any issues that arise due to whatever reason, those are brought up to the area superintendent, Mr. Russell, to handle those concerns.
Great, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cologne. Yes, Ms. Cuthbert.
Can I ask you a question about funding? Do you, I didn't know if you, if that was in your purview.
Sure.
For today? Last year, I know we went to the municipalities, and I guess we're not doing that this year. Are we seeking any assistance from the county? Because most school districts receive up to 50% reimbursement from their county government.
So, we have some contracts, Orion Beach, Daytona Beach, South Daytona, Deland, and Voluscan Sheriff's Department. Our contracts moving forward is asking for a 50-50 split on the SRDs or SROs that they're going to, to put in place. Our safe school funding that we just received, we had an increase in that, that cost will cover what we're looking forward to for next year, for safe schools.
I believe those will be on the next Board agenda.
It will, yeah, your workshop, you'll see that coming.
Okay, sorry, thanks. And then, the guardians we have now, do they have to have yearly updates on training?
Yes, so, June 4th, if you have time permitting, if you wish to come out, you can see our guardians requalify. And then at that point in time, we actually have additional training that they're going to go through. And then we do it again right prior to school starting as well.
Okay, thank you. I have always made a point, when I go on a school campus, to meet the school guardian or the resource officer, and I'm very impressed with all the professionals that are on our campuses, so thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Superintendent?
Superintendent recommends continuing the current guardian program, which does not include arming teachers or utilizing teachers as guardians. Senate Bill 7030 expanded school district options and eligibility for participation in the guardian program and other school safety requirements.
Thank you. You've heard the recommendation, do I have a motion?
Yes.
Ms. Cuthbert?
Second.
That was, that was the fastest I've ever seen that hand go up.
I partly recommend that we reinstate our guardian program and not arm teachers.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
And not, and not on teachers. And I believe, Ms. Wright, did you second that, or Ms. Haynes, Ms. Wright? Okay. Alright, there's a motion, there's a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, and those opposed, and we are unanimously against arming teachers. So there, okay.
Thank you.
Yes. And now, we are on Item 21.04, there's a few people from the public that would like to speak on this item, and I have.
Thank you, gentlemen.
One of our award-winning students that's been here the whole night, so, good evening.
Hi, I'm Annabella Oliveri, and I wanted to give you my perspective on the uniform policy. I disagree with banning hoodies because it's covering skin, and the whole reason you put a uniform policy in place was not to be uniform, but to cover skin. And also, some kids feel very uncomfortable about the way they look, especially in middle and high school, so they use hoodies to like, cover themselves, because polos can't be very forgiving. And they use hoodies, and then if you take away the hoodies, they'll probably find something like a bulky sweatshirt to wear, it's just going to do the same thing. And zipper hoodies, I, I haven't been able to find any, I've looked around, they don't exist. They're kind of extinct a little bit. Also, I think the whole reason, the issue with the hoodies, is that the hoods are being worn in classes, but that's not really a hoodie issue, that's more of like a enforcement issue that needs to be addressed with the teachers and administration at the school. And I think it's more of a problem in high schools than in middle schools, because I don't see a lot of my classmates wearing hoods in middle, but, thank you.
Thank you, thank you for being here, appreciate your comments. We also have Leslie LaRue.
Good evening, Mr. Persis, school board members, and Mr. Russell. I'm sorry that I even have to be up here to address this, it feels like three years of this overwhelming battle over clothing. And I'm going to be honest, I'm giving you my perspective as a parent and an employee. Unless we are going to line up every single student in the morning and judiciously execute an equitable sense of, yes, that's okay, no, that's not okay, asking teachers to do it in class is not being effective. I never thought it was subjective to say no holes in jeans, but apparently it is. So, I just, let's be done with it. I'm going to tell you right now, it's our bottom quartile that is not following the dress code. At least in elementary school. Because at that point, it's still parents, and let's be honest, a lot of the issues with the bottom quartile is lack of parent involvement. I wish I could say that's not always the case. I have a child who struggles in school, I give her everything I can to help her, she has phenomenal resource teachers to help her, and I'm proud to say, it wasn't a three, but she got a 297. And I sat with bated breath, ate antacids for a week. My child never knew I was stressed. I think we have so much to be grateful for in our district, and I think we're trying to look at peripheral, peripheral things to fix, when student achievement comes down to having the highest quality teachers in the classroom. And that comes down to funding them and making it a priority. So, just my two cents, thank you for listening.
Thank you, thank you for staying through the meeting. Alright, that's the only, that's the last comment I have on 2104. So, who do we have here? Mr. Manning, again, are you coming forward? And Ms. Freeman?
Yes, sir.
Hello. And this is Item 21.04, Authorization to Advertise Proposed Amendments to School Board Policy 217, School Uniforms.
If I, if I might, just for a second, Mr. Chairman, Board Members, Mr. Superintendent, Stacy Manning, again, General Counsel. Last meeting, this was discussed, Ms. Freeman brought some proposals to y'all, there was some discussion, and we thought it best to actually try to get those concepts down in the proposed policy and bring it back to y'all today for authorization to go ahead and advertise. It was a little confusing direction about whether we were going to go ahead and advertise right away, but we thought this is the best course of action, so everybody can, can get a good look at and, and see what it says. And I can let Ms. Freeman take it from there, but just to hit a couple of high points, the statement, and this is a part that actually hasn't changed, does indicate that it is the responsibility of the principals to see that the dress appearance of any student should not be extreme to the point of creating a disturbance or be hazardous to the student and/or others or school property, whether or not this specific case is covered by the information below. So ultimately, that hasn't, there is no change in the policy in that regard.
Got it, thank you. Ms. Freeman, hello?
Good evening, Mr. Persis, Board Members, and Superintendent Russell, Susan Freeman, Area Superintendent. The policy presented to you this evening is a request to advertise and reflects your directed changes from the May 14th Board Meeting. The changes for middle school include allowing hoodies to be worn only if they have a zipper. No pullover hoodies would be allowed. High school changes would allow for students to wear any solid color polo or collared shirt, any school-related t-shirt, and any solid color bottom. There were no recommended changes for elementary students. If authorized by the board, the policy will be advertised and brought back for adoption.
Did you need to make a further comment?
No, sir.
Okay, alright, Mr. Superintendent?
Superintendent recommends the authorization to advertise proposed amendments to School Board Policy 217, titled School Uniforms.
Okay, and just so that we're clear, when we say to advertise, how long are we talking about this advertising?
I think about, I believe it's, is it 28 days? I believe it's 28.
I believe it's not 30.
30.
Well, 28 or 30 days, anyway, okay.
30 to be safe.
Alright, so then, are, are we saying after that time, then it would come back to us?
Yes, yes, sir.
For a final vote? So we're not doing anything final, I just want to make sure everybody knows that. All, all we are doing is advertising this, from which we'll get input, comment, correct?
That is correct. We'll have another session like this after the advertising, and that, that way, folks out there will have an opportunity to come and comment on, on, on what's being proposed.
Sure, sure, sure. Well, I'm just trying to look ahead and thinking of school board meetings, I know we have one, I think it's the 25th of June.
Yes.
It would be great if we could, if we could make a final decision on the whether that's enough time, it's close. But, you know, I'm just trying to say, in order to give parents and students notice that this, if any changes are being made, these are the changes, and, so that they don't perhaps purchase the wrong items. Okay, having said that part, so what we are voting on is just to advertise, okay? Just advertise. And you heard the recommendation, do we have a motion to approve the recommendation to advertise the, the new policy? I don't see a motion do that. I see, I see a question, yeah, go ahead, Mr. Cologne.
So we're eliminating jeans altogether for high school? Is that what this is saying? Because we're saying any solid bottom. Because I know the discussion was whether or not the jeans could have tears or not, but to eliminate the jeans, is, is that what this reads?
I don't believe jeans were eliminated, I believe that the bottoms, other than jeans, could be a solid color.
So we struck out denim, navy blue or black denim are also acceptable. And so arguably, and, and I, and I know that this was mentioned last meeting, I just want to make sure that I'm understanding this, this would eliminate jeans altogether?
No, I don't believe that that was the recommendation to eliminate jeans, it was only to have any color solid bottom, any solid colored bottom.
So are jeans a solid color?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Black?
Yeah.
I think, my jeans are all the same color.
Let's agree they're the same color. Can we just agree on that? Yes, Ms. Haynes?
I think where the problem is, is if you look under the high school part, and you look under Section 1, we did strike through, blue or black denim long pants are also acceptable. So that line, and I think that's where.
The confusion is?
That's where I'm getting. Because what we're basically saying is we're going to, the only thing that's going to be allowed are, you know, cocky bottoms, blue, navy blue bottoms, and no jeans, by striking that out. And so that's number one, that'd be number one concern for me, and then number two, I'm not in, you know, I think with the hoodies, when I thought about it a little more, a hoodie with a zipper is nothing more than a sweater. So arguably, I, I don't know that we're addressing hoodies, because all that really is, is a sweater that has a thing that goes above. So I, I don't, you know, like the young lady said, you could wear a sweatshirt, and that's, covers just as much as a hoodie would.
I wanted to give Mr. Manning a chance, did you, can you clarify this issue? Because I'm sure we want to, and I don't think it was the board's intent to ban jeans.
You're right, and I think if, if y'all were in agreeance, where, where it's struck through, where it says gray, navy blue, or black denim long pants are also acceptable, that could stay in the policy that we advertise, would that resolve?
That would resolve that for me, yes.
That would resolve that issue, correct? Correct? Correct.
Okay, so I would, I mean, if that's, do we have a motion yet?
No.
So I would ask.
We don't have, we don't have a motion, but before we do, we wanted to make sure we cleared.
So I would ask in the motion, that that be included, please.
So, Mr. Superintendent, would you recommend that, with that change of allowing jeans? And now?
Wait, and you have a question over to Mr. Chair?
Yeah, yeah, just, I just wanted to make sure if he, if you're good with that.
The Superintendent recommends authorization to advertise the proposed amendments and its additional changes to School Board Policy 217, titled School Uniforms.
Okay, thank you. Just wanted to make sure we're, you're recommending what he just said. Ms. Haynes?
So, I really appreciate the young lady that came up here and spoke, and she was very honest about what's happening and why kids wear hoodies. I have heard from other students, I've heard from parents. I will say, I'm not so sure that zipper hoodies are easy to find. I, I agree with that, but I've heard both sides. I've heard parents, and I even had a student tell me not to do the hoodies, and reason wise, I've had parents say, my kid's going out right now with a hoodie on in 97-degree heat, which is not really safe for a student, because they're becoming overheated. So, I don't know what the right answer is, quite frankly, and I, I can't believe we're kind of to this point, that we're talking about hoodies, and we're going to write hoodies in here. But.
I know, I know, and, and we've all been in schools, and we all see it all the time. I was at school just the other day, elementary school, one child's there with a hoodie on the entire time, you know, it's 95 degrees, whatever it is, and, and the hoodie, with the hood on the head to, not just zip. it is, and, and the hoodie, with the hood on the head, to not just zip. Okay. Wait, well, as, as, as of this moment, ladies and gentlemen, we have a recommendation from the Superintendent to advertise the proposed uniform policy with the changes. And if we don't advertise it, and we just don't change the uniform policy, and I thought we all agreed that we needed to make some changes to the high school policy.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion that we advertise our policy.
Okay, advertise the policy.
Second.
Second. And just so I'm clear too, Ms. Freeman, so the policy that we are advertising does include...
With the amendments.
The middle school hoodie zip thing.
So I'll take back my second, because I don't believe, you know, I'm kind of, I'll tell you where I'm drawn. It's the fact that our principals asked us for this.
I know.
And so I, I'm okay with moving forward in advertising, but I, I'm definitely gonna go out and find out the why of the, why they felt that was important, including the folks that were here to speak to us about why they wanted that. Because, again, it goes back to enforcement, and if they can't enforce that, you're not gonna tell a kid to take his sweater off when it's cold outside. Probably can't tell a kid to take it. I mean, this is, we're all, we're, we're kind of circled back here on the enforcement issue. So...
Can I interject?
Go for it, please.
Yes, Ms. Cuthbert?
Four years ago, when we discussed this, I was the lone vote against it, and it was because of the enforcement issue. It's a dress code. And whatever, whatever we have our students dress in, it's all about the enforcement, and not to put it on the backs of teachers. It's the duty of the administration. And it's their choice, either, you know, to enforce it or not. So, to me, I mean, I'll vote, I made the motion to advertise it, but I can tell you right now, I will not vote for it, for the same reason I didn't vote for it four years ago. So, that's why.
Well, I think, to, to your point, and to Mr. Cologne's point, I think we all ended up at the last meeting, just doing what the principal said. Because we felt like, well, this is what they wanted, and they're the, they're the ultimate enforcers. So if this is what they believe they could enforce consistently, then we thought we would give them that opportunity. You know how I feel about it too, so, you know, all that. However, we, your second is still in now, or is it into advertise or not? I gotta, I gotta...
And so I'll say this, and, and, Mr. Superintendent, not to be insensitive, but I think this is something that's gonna fall on the enforcement of the new Superintendent when he is put in place. And so for us to put something in place that may not be enforced, because that hoodie, that, that right there, forget it. I mean, you could suspend half your campus because of a hoodie. And we could suspend three-quarters of our campus right now because of uniforms. And so, you know, I, I think that when we started this conversation, we were not where we are today. And it comes, like, you know, it goes back to enforcement, and, you know, for all the parents that have written and said, "Why are you giving in to the kids and telling, letting the kids decide what they're gonna do in our campuses?" You know, there's validity to that. And so, you know, that, that's part of the reason why I'm kind of pulling back a little bit, because it does come down to enforcement. And can a principal really enforce the hoodie? Yeah, we could go ahead and advertise it, but I can come back and say, you know what? I think we need to strike that, and we're kind of back in square one again. I don't think they'll be able to enforce it. They can't enforce a polo shirt now, why are they gonna enforce a hoodie? We could barely get the kids, I mean, when I served breakfast at one of my schools, it became a line, only because Grandma usually tells them that, "Please take your hoodie off." So they kind of listened to me a little bit, they kind of looked at me one eye, because nobody tells them to take it off, you know? The student that you saw at that school, did he have one earbud in, or did he have two earbuds in? Who knows? So, that, that's kind of why I, I kind of put the brakes on this, because in the end, this is going to be an enforcement issue, and we don't have a uniform now, it's not enforced, and so, you know, to put more rules into something that's not gonna make a difference, I don't think it'd be proper. So I will withdraw my second on that.
Okay, so, we gotta understand, though, where, where we are, because if we, if we are not gonna advertise any change to our current dress code, then we are going sort of against the grain of what the principals recommended, that they would like to see at least, at least changed. Now, granted, the elementary schools, we haven't changed anything, right? So, elementary schools, we left alone. Middle school, the only issue was the hoodie. And then high school is where we made most of the changes. So if you, if you want to leave things the same at the middle school, and just allow, allow the hoodies to be worn like they have been, then we can advertise only the changes as we approved at our last meeting for high school.
If I might, yes, if the Superintendent were to recommend, that could be accomplished just by removing Paragraph 4 under middle school, where it states that hoodies are only allowed to be worn if they have a zipper, no pullover hoodies are allowed, that could just come out completely in the, in the, in what is advertised. We'll have to obviously change the numbering, if that is the Superintendent's recommendation.
Can you live with that?
And so I, I can live with that, only because that'll give us 30 days to go out and find, talk to our principals, see exactly what the, so that, and then if we need to...
Okay, let me check with Ms. Cuthbert. Ms. Cuthbert, are you still making the motion to advertise?
Mr. Russell put a motion to advertise this with the change to the...
Jeans.
Yeah.
The jeans. My motion is still there to advertise, yes.
And now, and now the change, though, includes excluding the middle school hoodie, okay? So you're still good with that?
If Mr. Russell wants to make that motion.
Okay. I think you, I think you kind of said that in your first motion, so, Mr. Cologne, your second? All right. We have a motion, we have a second. All those in favor of advertising the new uniform code, whatever it is, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? All right, we'll advert, okay. So we are gonna advertise, and you got just the high school changes.
I think we got her.
Ms. Freeman?
We've taken out the, the navy, navy blue or black denim long pants are acceptable. That's staying in, in the, in the part, this alarm, hoodies is coming out.
Make sure that's, that they can wear jeans. Make sure that's clear. We didn't take away the wearing of jeans. All right, we are now on public participation at the end of the meeting, and we have one person, Jennifer Hoag. Is Jennifer still here? Hey, hello. Hello.
It's been a long night, hasn't it? Hi, Jen. Good evening, Chairman Persis, members of the Board, and Superintendent Russell. My name is Jennifer Hoag, I reside at 1299 Greenland Terrace, Deland, Florida, 32720. And I've come before you today, for those of you that don't know me, I am a 37-year veteran of Volusia County Schools. I'm a product of Volusia County Schools, and I am, have to say, I, I pride myself on being a very committed member of Volusia County Schools. I, about 15 hours ago, I was in the middle of the Dayton, Ohio tornadoes, so I feel like I've, yeah. So I'm a little scattered of what I want to talk to you about today, but I feel it's very important for me to say what I want to say. I have to tell you, I'm disappointed in what has happened today, and what happened last Board Meeting. And my disappointment is huge, because I feel like this is a part of me. This district is a part of me, and who I am. And I think, Mr. Cologne, I will say that we did things wrong here. We did them very wrong. And absolutely, it was a disgrace, in my opinion, not only to the staff members of Volusia County School, the students, the faculty, everyone, the citizens of Volusia County. There's always a right way of doing something, and there's a wrong way. And I think we probably all grew up that way. We grew up knowing the right thing to do, and the wrong thing to do, and the right thing to say, and the wrong thing to say. My mother always told me to say it right. I hope I get it right tonight. But what I want to do, what I want to say is, and I think, I have to reemphasize a lot of what you said, Ms. Cuthbert, you were spot on. Mr. Russell has done an amazing job, in my opinion, with what he was dealt with, to be honest. And, Ms. Wright, you said something that kind of stuck with me, and that was dysfunction. And I think that, honestly, the new Superintendent coming in, or whomever takes Mr. Russell's position, you guys can't be dysfunctional. You have to be united, you have to be a united front. And I've seen several Boards in my day that were extremely dysfunctional, and guess what? They got nothing done, absolutely nothing. And I have to commend you, Mr. Russell, for a job well done. Because when I listen to your accomplishments, I could have probably added a few more to them. And you've done an outstanding job. Even though everybody knows it's time for change, and it is time for change for a lot of things, but not in a year that everything in this district is going to change. 1920 is gonna be a district from hell, I will say that. Not a district, a year from hell, sorry. Because you have changes that are going to occur, and I can talk, because of the Student Information System and the ERP. Those two changes alone are two major business systems, two major business systems that are going to impact every single person in this district, even our community members, and our students, and our parents, and our faculty, and our staff. People are gonna walk away for the summer, they're gonna come back next year and say, "I don't know how to do my job anymore." Too much change. And then we've just added one huge layer of change. In my opinion, we've created the perfect storm. And I hate that. And it, it makes me want, I have cried, it doesn't make me want to cry, I do cry, because there's a lot of good in this district. And that momentum is now kind of being pushed back. So thank you for your time, and it's been a long night for everybody.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you so much for your service, just amazing.
Okay, we are at item 23.01, items from the Board, Superintendent or Attorney for Discussion. Mr. Doran, I ask you, you have any comment?
If you all are going to put together any workshops going forward...
Yeah.
To discuss interim, Superintendents, process, procedure, anything related to the replacement of Mr. Russell, then the statute would require that you do so as a Board. No individual Board Member has the ability to call the meeting, and you can't really call one without the Superintendent, except as a Board. So I just point out that if you're wanting to hold some sort of workshop, you need to decide as a Board to do that, and pick the time and vote on it.
Let me ask you this, because everything is calendar-oriented now, and people are busy, and I want to get on everyone's calendar and find out what dates you all are available. And I also want to talk with Andrea Messina, and check with her availability from the Florida School Board Association. She was very kind and offered her services, and I think that would help us a great, a great deal. So I know we have a School Board Workshop already scheduled on Thursday, June the 6th. I don't know how packed that meeting is. I know you and I have talked about a couple of things, I think finance was one of them, and budget.
Yeah, on June 6th, we have the, we have budget, and then the capital budget.
The capital budget, yeah. So, go ahead, yeah.
I'm the least important person here, but I do have an irreconcilable conflict on the 6th, so I just want you to be aware of that.
Okay.
I could send somebody else, I can do outline for you, I can try and help.
Right.
But I just wanted you to be aware of that.
Okay, and I'm, and I'm not even sure that Andrea is available on that day?
Yeah.
But I'm throwing that day out first, because it's already on the calendar.
I understand.
And everybody's reserved that time, as of now, so. But as we look beyond the 6th, people, School Board Members, just bear with me, if you'd be kind enough to look, look at your calendars as well. Obviously, we have a School Board, Mr. Superintendent, do we still have a School Board Workshop on the Tuesday, June 11th?
Yes, that's the budget.
That's the budget? That's, that's different than the, than the one on the 6th, though?
Yes.
Okay.
It's capital, and once the general budget.
Okay, so there may be an opportunity on the 11th to add something to that work?
She won't be able to come, that's the thought about FSBA.
Oh, that's right, okay. Thank you, Ms. Wright, for providing that information. And then we are at FSBA that rest of that week, correct? And then that ends on Friday or Saturday?
Friday.
Friday.
And then, so then, after that, you're looking at June 17th, June 18th, June 19th? Board Members, is there, is there anyone, is, is June 18th a good day? Let's put it this way, is June 18th not a good day for anyone?
I'm good.
I just want to get like two or three dates, and then we can hone in, and, and on it, if that's agreeable.
I'm good any day that week.
June 18th, is that, is anyone that can't make it, June 18th? All right, I'm putting June 18th as a possibility. I'm gonna put June 6th as a possibility. What about June 17th? I skipped over June 17th.
That's fine.
June 17th, Ms. Wright? Ms. Haynes?
17th, 18th, it's fine.
Okay, that's enough. I got, we have three, three, three options, and I think we can, we can find, find something during that time. And so, Mr. Doran, what, what I need to do, as soon as I secure a date, I'll let you know. And so if it is June 6th, can you get, Mr. Sims, to, to cover that?
Yeah, I can, I'll cover it, 17th and 18th are great for me.
Okay, and if it's not gonna work out for, for Florida School Board Association, we may do the 17th or 18th?
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of how we do this. I guess there could be a motion to set a workshop on one of three dates, at least we would have that in the record.
Okay.
In other words, if we knew a specific date, I'd be having you guys make a motion second and approve that date, and...
Yeah.
Right, but if we don't have those three dates, but in the meantime, are you gonna be getting together? No.
No.
To vote on it. And it has to be advertised seven days in advance.
Yeah.
And, and there has to be an agenda, so we have to put that together. I guess I can work with Ms. Warrens on that.
Yeah, and it's just, it's, it's not the hiring of anything, it's, it's the process.
I'm sorry, I caused you to worry.
The, the hiring process, that's what we're discussing.
Well, we, we need to know, we need to discuss that now. What is the agenda exactly? I mean, what do you want to put on the agenda?
I want the Board to have an opportunity to discuss openly how they want to go about both of those things.
Okay.
Okay? And then, from that, this discussion will probably lead to another meeting of sorts. But, so, so before we leave, can, do we need a motion to say that the Board will meet in a workshop setting either June 6th, June 17th, or June 18th, for the purposes of...
I guess.
The hiring process.
We're easy about three dates, but I don't know the, to be honest.
But, I mean, just to have it covered.
If you had, if you picked a date, I'd have no problem.
Yeah, I can't, I can't pick a date. As soon as I pick one, it'll be the wrong one, and then we gotta come back, and while we're all here, we can take official action.
Yeah, we'll just run with it. Just have a motion, pick it on one of those three dates, to be determined based on whatever the criteria are that determines which date. That being, somebody can attend, is that what you're saying?
Okay, yeah, so that, yeah, so, so the motion would be that we're gonna have a, a workshop, we really don't have to say the 6th, because we've already got that scheduled.
No, well, okay.
Right?
Yes, sure.
Okay, so, so the motion would be that we would have a workshop on June 17th or June 18th, to be determined by the availability of the Florida School Board Association representative?
And this would be a workshop that Mr. Russell would not be attending?
Right, right.
Right. Well, I just want to say that.
Yeah.
So, everybody knows.
Yeah. And we need to have, we need to have this room.
Which kind of makes it more important that I'm here, but I can't be here the sixth.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Cuthbert, can you make that motion or can someone make, can someone make, make a motion so that we have this workshop scheduled?
I will make the motion to what he said. Because that went around, round and round quite a bit, but to schedule on either the sixth, the seventeenth or the eighteenth, pending the availability of the presenter.
Yeah, from the Florida School Board Association.
To be determined.
Do we gotta, do we gotta get specific, like the time?
It doesn't hurt. I, yeah, more, more specific you can put in.
You want, you want to say the ten AM time on the seventeenth or eighteenth?
At ten AM.
Ten AM? All right, at ten AM. All right, we have a motion for scheduling a workshop on June seventeenth or June eighteenth depending on the availability of the Florida School Board Association representative to discuss the process that we'll use to hire the interim Superintendent and the permanent Superintendent. And that was a motion. Do I have a second? Second from Ms. Haynes. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye.
Okay. And the motion carries four to one. And is there, are there any other comments from anyone before we adjourn the meeting this evening?
Mr. Chair, the one thing I'd like to see if at the next meeting, we could bring a recommendation for our chief academic officer, should you see a fit?
That's up to the Superintendent. That's up to the Superintendent. Any other comments?
Yeah, can I ask you that question?
Yes.
So, how are we gonna, when will we know the seventeenth or the...
I'm hoping tomorrow.
Okay.
I'm gonna get on it right away.
All right. And then, when you find that out, what's the process?
Then I was gonna contact you first.
Perfect.
So, you get it on your calendar.
Well, yes.
And then, I would contact Connie, I thought, and then Connie could get the word out to all of you that the date has been set for...
And to prepare an agenda and to notice it.
Yeah, oh, yeah, absolutely.
All the above, right?
Yes. Because we would be in compliance without any problem.
Yeah.
Good, thank you for that. Any other comments?
Yes.
Yes, Ms. Wright?
I have a quick comment. So, tonight, colleagues, when we leave here, it is so important that we are professional. There, I'm sure, there's a whole lot on social media and I'm not a social media person, but we cannot engage in the conversation on social media because we are professionals. And that is what, we have to make sure that we do not engage in any negative, I don't care what it is. We should not be on social media engaging in any content other than posting about our children. Thank you.
I agree with Mrs. Wright.
I absolutely agree with you. Heed Ms. Wright's advice. Comments are gonna be said, but to me, there's no dysfunction on this board. You all are smart, great, passionate people who care about this district and you care about kids and I have full faith in everybody here. We'll make, we'll make good decisions going, going forward. Thank you and good evening. Thank you, Ted.
Yes, sir. Appreciate it. Okay. So, I'll just...